I'd like to call the order of the meeting of the Board of Trustees for Long Beach Community College District for Tuesday, June 26, 2018. If we could all please stand, I'm going to ask the student trustee, our new student trustee, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, boy. At this time, I'd ask the secretary to please call the roll.
Dr. Virginia Baxter.
Here.
Jeff Kellogg.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here remotely from Colorado, but here.
Just a "here" is fine.
Sunny Zia.
Here.
And student trustee Jones.
Here. Thank you. I would like to welcome student trustee Donald Jones. Welcome, first meeting, my man. You are going to enjoy it, I hope. I can say that because this will be the last time you'll see me, too, so it's all on your own. We also, if you haven't noticed, trustee Malauulu is remotely hooked in, so all I can say is trustee Malauulu, you're going to have to literally interrupt if you, because I can obviously recognize you in Colorado, but, so please, if you have a question, just chime in, as I know you will. Are you there, Vivian?
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, very good. First order of business, 1.4, student trustee, you actually can vote on this item. This is the approval of the minutes of May 22, 2018, regular board meeting. Could I entertain a motion of second?
So moved.
Motion trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Questions, comments on approval of the minutes of May 22, 2018. Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Hold on one second. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Trustee Malauulu.
Yes, sorry, I just wanted to just make one very small, minor correction on the minute from the last meeting. I believe, I'm trying to find it, it's Pat McKean's last name was misspelled, oh, no, 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 not Pat McKean, sorry. It was Tristan Loughlin at the adjournment, item 14.1. The correct spelling of Loughlin is with an A, not a U, so it's Tristan Loughlin with an A, and that was the only correction to the minute.
All right. The motion reflect that correction. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the approval of the minutes.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Zia.
Yay.
Donnell Jones.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is item 1.5. These are introductions of special announcements. This time, I'll recognize our superintendent president.
Thank you, President Kellogg. We have some very exciting announcements tonight. LBCC was pleased to be offered, to be offered a supplemental employee retirement plan, which rewarded employees who are over the age of 50 to retire early with a monthly benefit in addition to their STIRS and PERS retirement plan, and 53 of our outstanding employees accepted that SERP opportunity, and we want to give them some very special recognition tonight. What I'm going to do is I'm going to read off, first, the list of classified and management retirees, followed by our academic retirees, and as you hear your name, if you could come forward, we're going to take a group picture, and we have a certificate for you, and I will also read some highlights of your bio, so that we can recognize and thank you for your service. But first, let me start by thanking you from the bottom of our hearts for your absolute undying loyalty and service to Long Beach City College. We know how much this college means to you, how much you love it, and how much you're going to miss it, and we are really going to miss you. You saw us through some fantastic times, through the building of this campus, on this side of Carson, through the Long Beach College Promise, and so much more, and we want to thank you so much. Please keep us in your hearts, and remember that once a Viking, always a Viking, right? So, here's to you. We thank you so much. So let's give you a giant round of applause and a standing ovation. Great job. As I read your name and you hear your name, come on up. Ruth A. Bear, Diane Bangs, Kathleen Black, Linda Brett, Rosemary Brinker, Luz Cervantes, Helen Duran, Jonathan Ekman, Leah Flores, Mark Garber, Thomas Hamilton, Cynthia Hanks, Karen Harada, Warren Hardy, Jose Hernandez Alcala, Patricia Hicks, Patricia Johnson, Barbara Lemmy, Elizabeth Madera, Corinne Magdaleno, Mary McEldowney, Marie Monaus, Margie Podron, Mara Frong, Fred Rosmanic, May Sakamoto, Merdad Shega, Vivian Shimiyama, Lisa Stewart, Tim Rowtana, Thomas Foo, Levi Webb, Therese Wheeler, Timothy Wooton, Antonio Ibera, and now our academic retirees. Joanne Armenia, Cynthia Bartlow, Laurel Bries, Scott Bruckner, Therese Butler, Susan Cully, Rosa Linda Delgadoio, Delia Du Ross, Tilahun Inuwe, Neil Galey, Deborah Haberfield, Donna Leduff, Susan Radloff, Dan Ripley, Melvin Ross, Ray Sumner, and Mildred Zapeta.
Who's left?
Who would like to go first? So let's take a picture first, and then you can sit down comfortably while we acknowledge you with your bios.
Let's start with Rosa Linda Delgadoio.
Our Vice President of Human Resources has 21 years of service, having served as a part-time instructor in ESL, Director of Amnesty Education, the Director of Staff Diversity and Staff Development, and finally, our Vice President of Human Resources. Thank you, Rose. Ruth A. Bear, our Career Development Center Coordinator, has served 36 years with LBCC. She started as a Career Pathways Support Services, and she is the Career Development Center Coordinator from 1982 to the present day. Isn't that exciting? Thank you, Ruth. Linda Brett, an Administrative Assistant, has 41 years of service to our college.
Whenever you want to sign it, that's a resolution.
She has served since 1976 as an Administrative Assistant in our Child Development Center. Thank you, Linda. Rosemary Brinker, 18 years of service. She started as an intermediate clerk in Academic Affairs, and then became an Administrative Assistant in Triple SP, where she served since 2004. Congratulations, Rosemary. Jonathan Ekman, an Aquatics Facilities Technician, 34 years of service to LBCC. He's been an Aquatics Facilities Technician, a custodial supervisor, too, and has served as the Aquatics Facilities Technician since 2012. Congratulations, Jonathan. Mark Garber, our HVAC mechanic, keeps us cool, 35 years of service. Yes, we love Mark. He has served since 1983 as HVAC mechanic in facilities, and also has held other positions as a lead facilities maintenance, and as a counter man and warehouse man. Congratulations, Mark. There's our Thomas Hamilton. There he is, 18 years of service as a vocational instruction technician in cabinetry and carpentry, where he has served since 2000 as a vocational instructional tech in cabinetry and carpentry and the trades, as well as AFT president. Thank you, Thomas. There's our Cynthia Hanks. She is the Deputy Director of Academic Computing and Multimedia Services with 32 years of service. She has served as a technical media specialist in media services, and Deputy Director in Academic Computing and Multimedia Services since 2002, and I understand, are you an alum as well, Cynthia? And an alum. So congratulations, Cindy. Patricia Hicks, our locker room attendant, eight years of service, serving since 2009 as the locker room attendant in athletics, and does volunteer coordination as well. Congratulations, Patricia. Patricia Johnson, Administrative Assistant with 21 years of service as an Administrative Assistant in our Child Development Center since 1996. Congratulations, Tricia. Elizabeth Madera, Senior Administrative Assistant in Enrollment Services with 20 years of services since 1998. Congratulations, Elizabeth. Mildred Zapeta, our counselor with 28 years of service. She has served as a professor of electronics from 1990 to 2005, and a counselor from 2005 to present. Congratulations. Susan Radloff, Professor of Vocational Nursing, 18 years of service, first as a part-time instructor of vocational nursing, and as a professor of vocational nursing since 2003. Thank you so much, Susan. Donna Leduff, 30 years of service as a counselor. She's been here as a counselor since 1988. Congratulations, and thank you, Donna. Margaret, Margie Podron, Director of Business Support Services with 11 years of service. Started in 2007 as a contract manager in Business Support Services, moved to a Deputy Director of Purchasing and Contracts in Business Support Services, and since 2013 has served as a Director of Business Support Services in the Department of Business Support Services. Congratulations, Margie. Our Fred Rosmanic, Media Production Manager, 39 years of service. In 1979, he started as a lead media producer in media services, and became a Media Production Manager in Media Services, where he has served honorably since 2003. Thank you, Fred. Our Timothy Wooton, our Director of District Facilities with 11 years of service. He began in 2007 as our Deputy Director of Operations and Maintenance, and became the Director of District Facilities Administrative Services at the end of February in 2011, and retires with 11 years of service. Thank you, Tim. Did we miss anybody that we want to acknowledge? No? Oh, we got one. We got Cindy. We've got Melvin coming. I knew I saw you, Melvin. Mark, did we get one more? We missed Warren. How did we miss Warren? Mark, did you turn off the air conditioning on your way out? Warren? I think it was you. Warren Hardy, our wonderful HVAC mechanic with six years of service, has served honorably since 2011 as a HVAC mechanic in our Facilities Department. Thank you so much, Warren. Our Melvin Ross, last but most certainly not least, our Professor of History with 28 years of service. He was a dean from 1990 to 2000, and served as a professor of history from 2000 Y2K forward. We thank you so much, Melvin, for your years of service. Now, to close, we just want to say thank you so much. What did we do? We got one more. How could we miss one? I can't see. I can't see. Ripley? Dan Ripley, Professor of Health Education, 31 years of service. 1987, Dan started as a professor of health education, and has served LBCC for 31 years. Congratulations, and thank you. Did we miss anybody? We got Cindy? We got Cindy? I think we got everyone. Congratulations, and thank you for serving this institution for so many years, and putting your heart and soul. We will not be the same without you, but we do hope you come and visit frequently, like every day for lunch. So, congratulations to you, and thank you so much to your families and friends who let you be a part of our family for quite a while. We sure do appreciate your love that you have given your family members. Thank you. We're going to come out and distribute your certificates to you, so that you have those. And that concludes my report.
While that is going on, I'm going to recognize Vice President Zia, followed by trustee Baxter.
Thank you, President Kellogg. I just wanted to thank you all for your service. It's so tremendous. I mean, 39 years, 40 years, 18 years. We're very lucky that you were here, that you served our institution, our students and our community, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and I'm certainly going to miss you.
Trustee Baxter.
Yes, thank you, President Kellogg. It's a bittersweet evening tonight, because I think of all the years, I don't know if anybody added it up, but it's got to be close to 1,000 years in total that everyone has served, and you have all been such an integral part of the college, and I know you so well, and I've known you for so long, but I'm happy for you, because you're going to enjoy retirement, but like President Mamali said, once a Viking, always a Viking. So we expect you to come around and see us and visit us, and help in any way you can. I happen to be the holder of the retiree email list, so if you want, oh, here it comes, here's my commercial, here's my commercial. Don't yell out your email now, but if you want to be added, and to know what's going on at the college, when certain things happen that I think retirees would be interested in, I forward the information. So if you want to, now, I've already got Corinne, and I've got Rosemary, so you're all set, but anybody else who wants to be on my list, just send me an email, gbaexter@lbcc.edu. But thank you for your service.
And finally, the, did I hear trustee Malauulu?
I don't know if you heard me, but yes, I would just also love to weigh in.
The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. To everyone who has taken advantage of our supplemental employee retirement plan, I would just also like to extend my sincerest congratulations and gratitude, and just to let you know that we really appreciate the many, many years of service. It doesn't matter what end of the spectrum you're on. If you're on just the lower end of years of service to the highest end, the fact that you were at our college, and you contributed so much to the daily operations of our institution, you made us the great, the great community college that we are, you will certainly be missed, and we really appreciate, you know, the contribution that you're making as you exit to the retirement, and to the budget, and to the situations that we have facing. Today is our budget workshop, so, you know, your final contribution to the college, taking advantage of the SERP opportunity, is also a very good one, and noted. There are lots of individuals, and I don't want to single out anyone, but I've had the privilege of working with so many of you on different projects over the course of the last maybe five or six years, as an instructor, and also as a trustee, or as a volunteer. So, you know, you all know who you are, and to those with whom I never had the opportunity to work, it was also a privilege to just be a part of the same college family with you, and even though we may never have cross paths or worked together, I still really appreciate the work that you've done, just as much as I do those with whom I did co-labor for this institution. So congratulations, enjoy your retirement, and please keep us posted. Let us know what great things you're doing moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Malauulu. Regardless of the time that people have put in at this college, we all realize that Long Beach City College, we don't manufacture a product, if you will. We help people improve their lives through higher education. That is a very broad stroke. It's just not in the classroom, it's outside the classroom, it's when people drive by this campus. And when I looked at that list, and I know some, it was meant to be somewhat humorous, but the fact is that there's a tremendous amount of, whether, whatever you want to call it, institutional knowledge, involvement, there are a lot of people that are leaving this year that are, have really helped make this college transform, especially, and I'm going to say, since the time when we, well, I look at it as a point in time for me. When I was a student here in the 1970s, I came back as a trustee in 2002, and when I arrived here in 2002, the campus looked the same, the mentality of the college remained the same as it was in the 1970s. The changes that have taken place in this college have been so remarkable over a period of time, and that is all in due to a lot of people. We don't make widgets, we help people, and that's individuals like yourselves. So, opportunity for a lot of people to step up and take a leadership role to help move the college forward. It happened before, it should happen again, but the fact of seeing so many people out in the audience, and also on the list that we're looking at, which is over 50 people, the amount of individuals that have contributed to this college over the years is just an amazing group of individuals, so we've all said it, but our sincere thanks to each and every one of you for your contribution to helping students, a term that is horribly overused many times, where people say, "We're all about the students," but all the work that you've done has really been, made the college experience much better, and we are all very proud of the work that you've done, and it's going to be a tough, but it can be done, and it will be done, but the impact that you've all contributed to this college is remarkable. So, our sincere thanks to each and every one of you, and I would say, enjoy retirement, but I think you all really, I've rarely found an individual that wants to admit it, that when they retired from here, I don't want to say that you all make the same comment, but an individual said, a few years ago when he retired, he said, "I would have done this for free." I don't think anyone wants to do it for free, because you want to be paid, but the point is that there's a lot of careers you can pursue. Higher education, Long Beach City College is one of the finest areas in the world you can be involved with, and the things you did and contributed to people are unmatched, so sincerely thank you all very much for all the work you've done. You've done a great job. You've made this college what it is today. You should be very proud of that, because obviously, we're very proud of you. So thank you all very much. If you want to stay for the entire meeting, just to finish in a high note, please feel free. If not, we understand, so best of luck to you, and I'm sure we'll see many of you in the future as well. So thank you all very much. Superintendent President, that's all on this part?
Yes, sir.
Should we pause to make sure if people do want to slowly sneak out, or not? Thank you all. We're going to move on to the 1.6 is reordering the agenda. I have no comments on reordering, but I will ask again at this time. There's none, so 1.6 will move through. 1.7, this is the ASB President Report, your first one as well, so congratulations. Welcome on. Introduce yourself as well, please.
So, good evening, everyone. I'll just introduce myself, and a brief background about myself. My name is John Paulo Cantares, and you can call me Paulo. I came from the Philippines four years ago, and I started here at LBCC at 2016, and I got involved with leadership because I had, I've been, I had like close relationships with the three previous ASB presidents, so they started like, told me to get more involved on campus, so I started with the John Philippi Leadership Institute. I became one of the president's ambassadors, and just last year, I was the ASB secretary, and now I'm the ASB president, which I'm really, really excited to be part of, and serve my students. I have nothing to report, because I want my campus members to enjoy their summer, basically. For the month of July, we're just going to do some planning, and just, you know, just getting to know each other, and for the month of August, on, I think, the month of August, we're going to have like, I don't know if you guys got the memo, but we're going to have like the meet and greet with the Board of Trustees on the August, on August 14th, and we're going to have a training on UC San Diego on August 28th to the 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paulo, can you repeat the last part? You have a meet and greet with who?
A meet and greet with the Board of Trustees on August 14th. I don't know if I have.
Yeah, we haven't gotten the invitation.
Memo, yeah. I'll let my advisor know about it.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
The 1.8 is public comment on agenda items. Madam Secretary, we have no one on cards at this time. That's correct, so we'll move on from 1.8. Two, the Board of Trustee, this is appointment, item 2.1, the student trustee, you'll be allowed to vote on this. 2.1 is the appointments to the Citizen Oversight Committee, the recommended action, and then I'll entertain a motion, and then we'll have discussion.
So moved.
I'm sorry, the, no, I'll get you. The Board of Trustees confirmed the appointment of Dr. Rebecca Turrentine, and the reappointment of Eric Berg, Sharon Dix Jackson, Randy Gordon, and Joan Greenwood, for the term of 7/118 to 6/3020 to the Citizen Oversight Committee, as submitted. Background, we actually had an advertisement, we went through the process, and it is in the document, so at this time, entertain a motion. Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. On this appointment, questions, comments, members of the board? I don't know why I'm looking to my right, everyone's to my left now. Comments, questions, this time? Any?
President Kellogg, if I could just say.
Chair recognizes who, I'm sorry, I'm looking.
Oh, that's good.
Trustee Baxter.
I just want to say, I know Rebecca Turrentine personally, she's an, will be an outstanding addition to the Citizens Oversight Committee. She's the former superintendent of the Bellflower Unified District, she's also, was on the LA County Board of Education, so she's very familiar with construction, and a wonderful Long Beach resident, and I think she should make a great addition.
Thank you.
No.
The process, I sat in on it, and we did have representatives as listed in the document, so thank you, trustee Zia. If there's no other questions, comments on this item, then, Madam Secretary, if you could please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
2.1 is the appointments to the citizen oversight committee, the recommended action, and then I'll entertain a motion and then we'll have discussion.
So moved.
I'm sorry, the, uh, the, no, I'll get you. The board of trustees confirmed the appointment of Dr. Rebecca Turrentine, Turrentine, and the reappointment of Eric Berg, Sharon Dix Jackson, Randy Gordon, and Joan Greenwood for the term of 7/1/18 to 6/30/20 to the citizen oversight committee as submitted. Background, we actually had an advertisement. We went through the process and, uh, it is in the document. So, at this time, entertain a motion. Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. On this appointment, questions, comments, members of the board? I don't know why I'm looking to my right. Everyone's to my left now. Comments, questions at this time? Any?
President Kellogg, if I could just say?
Chair recognizes who, I'm sorry, I'm looking.
Oh, that's good.
Uh, trustee Baxter?
I just want to say, um, I know Rebecca Turrentine personally, she's an, will be an outstanding addition to the citizens oversight committee. She's the former superintendent of the Bellflower Unified District. She's also, was on the LA County Board of Education. So, she's very familiar with, uh, construction and, uh, a wonderful Long Beach resident. I think she'd make a great addition.
Thank you.
No.
The, um, the process, I, I sat in on it, and we did have representatives as, uh, as listed in the document. So, um, thank you, trustee Zia. Uh, if there's no other questions, comments on this item, then Madam Secretary, if you could please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Donell Jones?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 2.1, appointment of the citizen oversight committee carries. Item 2.2, this is the nomination of Doug Otto for the ACCT trustee leadership award. Let me give a little bit of background on it. This is an action item. Student trustee, you will be voting on this item as well. Uh, this is the, uh, annual, we're individuals who make a significant contribution as a trustee to promote the community college concept. Uh, this, uh, this award is given, and I believe the last one that was awarded was a trustee from Northern California, Paul Gomez, I believe his name was, was the last one from California. Uh, it is, uh, needs to have the, the board president and the board to approve. So, nominated trustee Otto for this. Uh, it's being nominated. He will be in competition with others nationwide. So, I will be sending a letter of support, if supported by the board, on behalf of the board of trustees for trustee Otto. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve on this item.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Zia. Comments, questions on this at this time? None? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 2.2, nomination of Doug Otto for ACCT trustee leadership award.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Donell Jones?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, presentation is 3.1, moving registration dates. Uh, this is informational item only. At this time, I'm going to turn to the superintendent president for a presentation.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Sylvia Lynch, Heather Van Volkenberg, and Cindy Baker, who are going to talk about a very innovative retention strategy that we are working on now to increase term-to-term retention. And it involves moving our registration dates. Sylvia, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, good evening. Um, thank you for allowing us to present tonight on the progress of our new retention strategy, um, which is designed to increase, as, uh, Dr. Romali said, it is designed to increase student enrollment, uh, ret, increased enrollment retention from term to term. Tonight, Heather, Cindy, and I will give an update on moving our registration dates up earlier into the, earlier in the term, overhauling our drop for non-payment process, and introduce a new service, which is to offer student payment plans. First, I wanted to take a minute and acknowledge the colleagues that are on this team. Um, it started as a slot team towards the end of 2017, and as you can see, we have expanded into a fully integrated group representing counselors, student support services, enrollment services, fiscal services, institutional effectiveness, academic services, and IITS.
So, one of the questions is, why are we doing this? So, we want to be increasing our term-to-term retention of students. And if you look at this graph here, what I've displayed is FTES for the fall and spring terms over the last five years. And we can see the blue, which is our fall term, tends to be fairly the same, a little bit of variation. But our spring, which is the red term, is decreasing over time. So, we are hoping that changing registration dates will provide opportunities for registration when continuing students are on the campus, and also that it will ensure staff and faculty are available for supporting students through the registration process that'll be occurring through the term. And Sylvia's going to talk a little more about that.
So, the first task our team performed was to research surrounding district registration dates. On this slide, we have sorted the results, um, by the fall registration dates of these districts. And as you can see, we are one of the last colleges to open registration for the fall term. We are also one of the last for spring as well. So, after a very collaborative and healthy discussion, we established our new registration dates. And now, starting this October, we will be one of the first schools to open registration. October 29th, we will open for the spring 2019 term, and April 29th, we will be open, uh, we will have open registration for the fall 2019 term. Once we solidified our registration dates, the next activity we performed was to identify any system impacts. Uh, more were identified, but from a systems perspective, there were three changes that we needed to make. The first is to redo the academic standing program. At the end of each major term, fall and spring, the college runs a process to identify academic standing and student status, which affects priority, uh, registration. Since this program will now run prior to the term ending, um, there are some assumptions we're reviewing and having to reprogram accordingly. And we're about 60% done with this process. The second impact is to enable the PERC process within PeopleSoft. Currently, since classes are completed before registration, uh, prior to registration, um, grades were also completed as well. So, we, pre-requisite checking was, is already in place. Um, but since registration occurs prior to the end of the term and prior to grades being submitted, we will assume students' success in that class for registration purposes. PERC is then a process within PeopleSoft that will review the grades. (noise) Okay. I know this is a little slow, but, um, anyway. So, PERC is a process within PeopleSoft that determines that if a student does not satisfactorily complete a gr, uh, class, and it will un-register the student from the class section. And then we also had to make sure that the tuition fees were booked into the proper fiscal year, since students will now be, uh, book, uh, registering earlier. Other impacts, um, not so much systemic, uh, within the, uh, within PeopleSoft, but we, uh, we had to look at our promise programs. Um, early bird events, which are designed for incoming freshmen, will need to be moved from April timeframe up earlier, probably around February. And of course, the communication to Long Beach Unified and other Promise Pathway Partner Schools, um, will need to be informed about this change as well. Moving up our registration dates also caused us to explore using 11th grade data for early bird events. Since the early birds were, are happening earlier, such as January and February, they have not completed their first term of their, uh, senior year. So, we are gonna, um, we're gonna, we're exploring using 11th grade data. And finally, the window for students to apply for college will be moved up to October, starting in October the year prior rather than November. Since, since the period of registration is expanding from eight weeks to 17 weeks, uh, we felt it prudent to discuss and recommend overhauling our drop for non-payment process. The team is currently researching how other colleges are handling this very delicate process and being very careful to not cause undue harm to students. We also intend to implement a feature within PeopleSoft called pending aid, which will be used in the calculation of the student balance and used within the drop for non-payment process. And finally, we are implementing a new student payment portal, which will be live by October to integrate with our mobile solution, which is needed so a student can completely register and pay on their mobile devices. Heather will talk now regarding why we're reviewing our drop for non-payment process.
Um, so, yeah. Uh, if we look at this chart, so what I'm showing you here is the number of unduplicated counts of student drops by date for fall 2017. So, this is just one term's worth of data. But when we looked across different terms, we see a very similar pattern. And basically, across all terms, including summer and winter, we'll see a very high peak of drops for the, on the drop for non-payment date, and then another peak around the start of classes. Um, so, that was one of the things that we wanted to address and think about. If we have a single date where we're dropping students for non-payment, we get this really high peak. The other thing that we looked at is the number of students that, once they're dropped, actually re-enroll. So, I know this looks a little bit messy. So, what I did is I created an average percent for fall and spring, which hits around, I think, 43%. Um, those are then a percent of students that are re-enrolling after they've been dropped for non-payment. And for the winter and summer terms, it's a little bit lower, 38%. So, basically, we're seeing about 50 to 60% are not re-enrolling after their drop for non-payment. Oh, that was doing that again. So, if we did an earlier or more frequent, and I think this is the key, a more frequent drop for non-payment process. And so, like Sylvia just said, we're looking at a situation where having earlier registration dates, we could have 17 weeks of time for registration. So, a single date is really going to be difficult and kind of confining us. And so, if we have, for example, a weekly process where you drop students as they register, and then within a week they pay or they get dropped, we can talk about what it would look like, but that increased frequency would do a number of things. One, it would open seats and courses. So, as students are being dropped for non-payment, those seats are now open again to other prospective students who are trying to enroll. That would give us more information in a timely way to let us know about the students' scheduling needs, so we'll see where prospective students continue to register frequently as other students are being dropped. It will also allow the, the workflow of our staff who need to help students get re-enrolled to be distributed over time. So, if we have a single drop for non-payment time point, then we have hundreds of students who are trying to re-enroll and get help from financial aid staff, get help from other enrollment services staff, right? So, this would actually distribute that workload for our staff over a timeframe, and that would also allow students more time to address whatever issues they need to address that is causing them to be dropped for non-payment. So, there's a number of opportunities for improving student success outcomes and staff workflow if we have a more distributed and frequent drop for non-payment process.
As you know, about 70% of our students receive the California Promise Waiver, formerly known as the Bog Waiver, and financial aid. What about the other 30%? Students who pay their tuition? 50% of the 600 students that were dropped for non-payment spring 2018 re-registered the following day. Students have asked both enrollment services and the cashier's office if Long Beach City College has a payment plan. Looking at the retention strategy of moving up registration dates and increasing the drop dates, along with the presented data of students being dropped for non-payment, then re-registering, the semester payment plan can capture this lost group of students. The payment plan through the e-commerce portal is secure, has easy enrollment, and has flexible options. It also is affordable, $25 a semester, so students can pay their tuition over a longer period of time. This concludes our presentation. Do you have any questions for Sylvia, Heather, or me?
Questions, members of the board at this time? Trustee Zia?
Um, I, thank you, all of you. That was a wonderful presentation, and I applaud you on this commitment. Um, and thank you, Superintendent President, Dr. Romali, for taking this, um, uh, very rigorously. Um, on the payment plans, how do we, how do we select the, the people that we partner with? The NellNet Campus Commerce? And what kind of competition do we allow so that we can make sure it's the most affordable and the most, um, prudent, uh, financially for our students? And that's the only question I have.
Sure. We did, uh, starting probably two years ago, we had a very thorough and detailed RFP process to select vendors. And we incorporated the solution of our e-commerce, our backend payment platform, um, e, electronic bills, payment plans, possible, um, if we wanted optional module to, um, to refu, use this product for refunds directly into student accounts. So, it was a very, very, probably one of the most detailed RFPs, um, I have been involved with, so.
So, do you, did you select them based on who's going to provide the, uh, best value for students as far as, um, the financial aspect, or was it a variety of things?
It was a variety. Um, I, I do believe this particular vendor did have the best value for the students, um, uh, for the payment plans. But it was an overall, there, there, we had, I believe, five or six responses to this bid process. Three of them are, um, college, higher ed vendors, and then we selected the best of the three.
And what's the term where the students have to pay?
Uh, they pay over the semester. So, they can register and then they define the, they take the total outstanding balance. It will divide it by four, and the student can enter their payment information, and then the payment will automatically happen over that period of time.
And if they do, if they can't pay, what happens?
Um, do you want to explain that?
Um, if they can't pay, uh, uh, NellNet has a very active management role in that, um, in sending out texts, asking, telling them that their, uh, their payment's going to be due soon. And they have a whole process. I can't really give you a lot of details right now because we haven't really looked at the different options, a lot of details on there. But, um, at this time, they're going to actively management, manage it along with the college.
I think if they don't pay, they'll get a hold on them.
True. They'll go back to, I'm sorry, back to the whole, they'll get a hold on their account, and they won't be able to, uh, register for the next semester.
And will there be interests charged?
No.
For those students? Okay, so, none of these, um, financial institutions charge interest for our students? Or are these partners that we have?
These partners we have, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Other questions? Trustee Baxter?
I have two questions. Uh, first of all, I think this is a great idea, and I'm glad you, uh, your committee has pursued it. A million years ago, when I went to college, you pre-registered in the spring for the fall, and therefore, the college could make adjustments on what classes to offer, how many sections to offer. Are you going to be able to change the schedule after the students start registering early like this? In other words, add, I teach history, add another section of history, 10 or 11, or, is that part of the component?
Kathy, did you want to answer? Is that's, that's more in line with her strategy?
Yes, we will be doing that. Yeah, we're constantly looking at the schedule, daily, hourly.
Okay.
And we make adjustments continually based on student need.
Okay, great. Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Okay, then the second question is, um, when the student sets up the payment, 70% are on some kind of financial aid, either a Bog or, uh, Pell Grant. Is that automatically paid into the, the debt, or how does, or their scholarship? How does that work?
The payment plan will really be to the, um, non-Bog students. It's for that other 30%.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Really, because the subject matter is, we're not the only college that's been impacted by this. The start date, I get the fact we're trying to jump ahead. And, uh, all, all that said, it's, um, uh, I had a lot of questions, but really, probably not for this, this forum, because it's just very interesting to be, when students, they, they, um, they sign up and they can't pay, or they have no desire, and you show some records. I'm curious, did other colleges find similar trends? Usually, they do. But did you actually look on some of the other colleges? Were they following the same track that we were as far as the, the people that were dropping, the people that would not enroll anymore? Were there, you seeing similar trends?
I'm sorry, the, the question is looking at other colleges and looking at trends?
Right. When you were looking at start dates and everything else, the trends, they were, were they experiencing the same thing as far as when people would, they would have registration even though a different date? Were they, if people dropped, were they finding the same thing about they wouldn't, they wouldn't enroll anymore? They have 50%, there would be a huge drop that we were showing slides ago.
Oh, I see. So, I think if I'm understanding your question correctly, we haven't looked to see if other colleges that have a single drop for non-payment date, if they are having students re-enroll at the same rates. Um, I think the trend that we do see, and Sylvia, you can correct me if I'm wrong, in community colleges, is there tends to be a, sort of a cycle of dropping for non-payment rather than a single date. So, it is harder for us to find that specific data. We would compare it locally. So, if we do implement a rotating drop for non-payment cycle, then we can see locally if that's causing changes in our percent in reenrollments. And then if it's not, then we can have another discussion about interventions to help make sure students are getting re-enrolled.
I, I hope it works because it really is, it's a huge area that, um, and at the end of the day, it costs the college dollars because these are part of our FTS and so on. So, um, I wish the very best on it because it will, and hopefully it'll work out what we all anticipate. But we know it's been, it's been a challenge throughout the system as far as students they... they register, then they go away, and, and the whole idea sometimes is they just, especially during the summer. And that was interesting, to see some of your graphs on that as well. So, good presentation. Other questions, comments? Student trustee?
As a student who actually does pay out of pocket, this is actually really appealing to me. One question I do have is, I guess currently, what will the primary difference be? I know that once you, you make a partial payment, you won't be dropped from your classes that you're currently enrolled in. So how does, having the payment plan, will that just keep your, your account in good standing all the way through, and you, and you won't have any multiples on the account, or?
I think this is an opportunity for students. We're moving our registration dates up, so let's say they, they register for a class, they sign up for the payment plan, and then they have a longer period to pay, several months. I think, again, I haven't gone into the details of some of this, but they could have six months to pay versus only four months. Because what you're telling me is you register for classes, you possibly drop, you re-register for classes, and then you pay a portion, and then you continue through. This is your opportunity to pay monthly and not have to wait till the end of the semester and everything is due then, and get debt, letters from the college saying you have a debt on your account.
Okay. And another question I have is, while on the payment plan, will students still be able to add additional classes and order their unofficial transcripts as if there were no hold on the account?
They will not have a hold on their account.
Okay, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Malalulu, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I would just like to commend you both on this great presentation. I really appreciate the visuals, and particularly, you know, all the different charts comparing what we do with what's happening with other colleges as far as dates. That really makes a lot of sense why we should move it up. I mean, if our competitors are offering the service to our students, why shouldn't we? So I really do appreciate that visual. I have three questions. So the initial question that I had is, what if a student is not doing well in a particular class at the time of the registration? And, you know, he, he registers for, face spring semester, he registers for his fall classes early with his new date, and then he perhaps maybe fails that class in the spring, needs to retake that class in the fall, but that class is already full. Does he have some kind of priority to be able to add that class? You know, or would there be a permission number given to him if he has the waitlist? Because the, the enrollment was so much earlier, and I'm not talking about all students, I'm talking about students who are not doing well in a particular class. How do we address that? Because I know some students who are always on the fence toward the end of the semester because they're not sure if they're going to need to retake that class or not. So I don't know, that's one question. I don't know if you can address that?
I think we are going to, going to need to talk about it and get back to you with that answer.
Okay. And I, I don't know if, if even what I posed might even be a solution, if that student would get some kind of priority for an add list or something. I don't know if that would even be viable, or if that would even be fair to students who did enroll in a timely manner. Okay, so the second question, on page ten, if you look at page ten, it's got the drop for non-payment date, and it's got a drop for the first day of class. If I can clarify, are you, are you talking about what's happening currently, or are you talking about, you know, the proposed change that you're offering? If, if that's, you know, I'm not clear on how that's going to work, because to me, the way I see this, you, okay, it says the highest, second highest number of drops for, to drop for non-payment, but if we're going to put students on a payment plan, how is that non-payment date going to affect that, the drop? And I don't know if I asked that correctly. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Maybe, so I'll try and tackle it, and if I'm getting it wrong, you can jump in and redirect me, and Sylvia and Cindy can help as well if it goes off course from what I can answer for you. And this is Heather, by the way, in case she didn't recognize my voice, but.
Yeah, that, that, thank you.
Okay, good. So yeah, so what this is showing, this is fall two thousand seventeen. So this is actually showing data from our fall, most recent last fall term, and I'm only showing one term's worth of data, but we did look at other terms, and we saw very, very similar patterns where you have these two really big peaks, one a drop for non-payment date, and one on the drop of the first day of class. And so the biggest peak is typically drop for non-payment, sometimes it's the second highest, but usually, it's the highest. So that's what we're looking at. When we talk about what that means in terms of students and changing our drop for non-payment process, I think the idea here is that by changing that cycle of doing it so we don't have a single date, but really, I think the intention is to look at a process that's tied to when a student registers. So maybe within two weeks, or three weeks, or four weeks. I don't know if we've decided what that timeframe is, but the idea is that a student registers, and then they have a certain amount of time to pay, and if they do not pay, and again, there's, you know, like Sylvia mentioned, there's other pieces to that. Some students will be, you know, will identify students who are considered having pending aid, and so those students won't be dropped for non-payment because they are having aid coming in to pay for their courses, right? So again, we're going to have these other structures in place to make sure that we're not creating barriers for students through our policies and practices. So that's part of it. So then the other part of it is changing that cycle, students who, there are going to be some students who are going to be dropped for non-payment and not re-enroll, and they might not have any intention to re-enroll, and they're sort of using that opportunity to passively not re-enroll. And so in those cases, we'll be finding those students sooner, and they'll be leaving the system sooner, than prospective students who may not ever actually enroll into the system because the classes they might go into are blocked, will then have opportunities as well. So by changing those drop for non-payment dates to be cyclical, there's opening up of opportunity for getting students who might not be enrolling at all to have opportunities to get into classes that maybe before were full. There's opportunities for staff and intervention services locally to help the students who got dropped to get re-enroll. And so, so does that help answer your question? I feel like I'm saying a lot of things, but I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
Yes, actually, you did.
Okay.
It makes sense, but it just, it just, you know, what if a student can't pay? What if a student struggles with payment, even given this extra six month time period to make good on that payment? And I, I know the answer to that question now, you know, if a student can't pay, they can't pay it, you know, the classes are dropped, and, you know, we bring in students that are on the waitlist, but even given the new parameter of an extended date, if a student is still unable to pay, then, you know, does the foundation step in? I mean, I hate to put another burden on them, they've already been very generous assisting, you know, our students. So how, how would that work? And that's my last question, by the way.
Trustee Malalulu, I wanted to try to answer the previous question that you asked about students and whether or not they've been, they would be given priority if they did not pass. You know, we, we really cannot do that, because as you said, it might not, it, it wouldn't be fair to other students. But this process really opens up the need for us to educate students and faculty on the need to make sure that students always know where they stand at any given point during the semester. It becomes really important with this situation. And we're hoping to use Canvas more and more and the gradebook feature so that students can go online and see very easily where they stand in any given class. And I know that the faculty are willing to do pretty much anything to help our students, and in many cases, this is on a case-by-case basis. The student may want to retake the course with the same instructor, and the instructor may be willing to add them in, knowing that they've already completed half of the coursework, and so it's often easier to stay with that same teacher. But it's, it's going to be a learning curve for all of us, and it's going to involve everybody on the campus as we go through this process. Does that help to explain or answer that question?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, actually, it does, and I, and I do understand, you know, and I do, I really do appreciate this. I think in the long run, this will benefit students more than the current model, and it will certainly help us out in terms of enrollment. So I, I appreciate it, and, you know, I don't know whose idea this was, I don't know the history of how this committee came about, but, I mean, I think it's a great job and long overdue, so good job. Thank you, thank you very much.
Other questions, members of the board this time? This is informational item only. Thank you very much. Move on to the next presentation. Just, trustee Malalulu, if I don't communicate back to you when you are texting me, it's because my, my phone is slowly dying, so if you don't see my acknowledgement of your comment, just be aware, it's probably because of my phone, not because I'm ignoring you. So just FYI.
Okay, thank you, no problem. Thank you.
And, and for the rest of the audience, trustee Otto is also on vacation. He is actually biking through the northeast part of the country. And I'm not making that up. Three point two, facility master plan update. This is again a presentation, informational item. Superintendent President?
I'd like to introduce Tim Wooton, Director of Facilities, who's going to review the construction update presentation.
Good evening, President Romali and members of the board. I'd like to acknowledge Menhany Efrim tonight, because he's here as the interim director of facilities, and he's also going to be my technical expert on the information presented Our agenda tonight is going to be cover scheduled maintenance projects, district-wide energy projects, current construction, current design projects, and completed construction projects. The first scheduled maintenance project is funded with fiscal year fifteen, sixteen Schedule Maintenance Fund, and also Measure LB, a total of three million dollars. It's a water conservation project at our PCC campus, and it's going to cover all the areas on the corner of PCH and Orange Avenue, also in front of building HH, and also on Twentieth Street on building II. Notice to proceed was issued in January two thousand eighteen, and if you've been by the campus, you can see that they're fully engaged in doing the hardscape right now with an estimated construction completion of two thousand eighteen, a summer of two thousand eighteen, I'm sorry. We also have a scheduled maintenance funded with the fifteen, sixteen allocation for, and also Measure LB funds for the LAC campus, building O one and O two. These two buildings are the only buildings that are not on reclaimed water right now, so this project is going to redo all the landscape on building O one and O two, and also put building Z on reclaimed water with no landscape work. Currently, it's in the bid process, we're actually reviewing the bids right now. Moving on, fiscal year two thousand sixteen, seventeen Schedule Maintenance Projects, also funded partially by Measure LB, is a district-wide project for ADA upgrades at PCC campus. West Bergen White is our design consultant, preparing documents for, construction documents identified by the CASF survey that was conducted at the PCC campus. Phase one is a site package. We're going to be doing all the architectural improvements on hardscape for ADA access as a phase one project, and then a phase two project is going to be addressing all the ADA issues in the building. So the phase one site has been awarded to Axiom Group. They started in March of eighteen, and the project is scheduled to be complete in the spring of two thousand nineteen. The notice to proceed for phase two was issued last week to Calco Construction Services with the project to be completed in the summer of two thousand nineteen. We also have funded with this allocation, the, the classroom lockdown project. This phase one has been complete, that was all the buildings, mainly, most of the newer renovated buildings that were easy to do because we had all the information on the door systems and the locking system, and they could be expedited pretty quickly. So that is complete. Phase two was a little more of the difficult areas, the older buildings where we had to go out and field survey to get all the keying data at the PCC campus and LAC campus. Right now, we have noticed to proceed with EJ Enterprises, and the work be complete by the spring of two thousand nineteen. Another scheduled maintenance project for twenty seventeen, eighteen funding cycle at a total of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. We're going to be replacing an oil switch at the transformer at building G, and replace the oil switch at the PCC main distribution. P2S is our engineering and design consultant, and they're processing of preparing those documents now. We've also completed a lighting inverter replacement in building T and building JJ. So the demo work is complete, and they're rerouting, that's actually, this project is complete. Moving on to district-wide energy projects, Prop thirty-nine, we consolidated three years of allocations, year three, four, and five, which are the final year to date, for the two thousand fifteen through two thousand eighteen years, and at one point eight million dollars. So the combination of the funding is going to do LED lighting, lighting retrofits at building O two, building T, and building HH is about fifty percent complete. Moving on to district-wide energy projects, this is the Integrated Energy Master Plan. This plan, this slide shows some of the mandates that we're trying to meet with this energy plan. These are executive orders from California's governor, and also some legislation that mandates that we reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and a number of other things. So the, the master plan, the DLR group was selected to create the Energy Master Plan to include clear paths towards compliance with the governor's executive orders with a goal of district-wide net zero. The IMP is integrated into the two thousand forty-one master plan and future designs, and it includes gathering information from our energy uses, our current energy uses. It included a central plant and building analysis, load analysis, and it will result in design recommendations with a goal of district-wide net zero. The project started in the summer of two thousand seventeen. We just looked at a rough draft this morning, so we're, we're on schedule to complete this Energy Master Plan by the summer of two thousand eighteen with a budget of two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Moving on to current construction projects, this is the LAC building D, the first floor and the second floor of the science labs. MSP was the architect, and Soltech Pacific was, is now the construction contractor. It's going to renovate sixteen thousand square feet of the first floor and about twenty-five hundred square feet of the second floor for new science labs. The project started in September two thousand sixteen. We have a new estimated construction completion of fall two thousand eighteen. As you know, we had to terminate the contractor TB Pennet for non-performance, and Soltech was issued an NTP on December fourth of two thousand seventeen, with a total project budget of fourteen point six million. LAC building P, English Studies, funded with Measure E and LB funds. Steinhouse, I'm sorry, Steinberg Architects was our design firm. AMV Construction is the contractor. We moved all occupants out to our swing space in building M and N, and this project will address all ADA, classroom improvements, and are currently working on paint, flooring, and MEP systems. Construction started February two thousand seventeen, is estimated completion in spring two thousand nineteen, with a budget of eleven million dollars. Building J, Auditorium, also funded Measure E and LB. SBA was architects. Novus is the construction contractor, and we're going to renovate thirty-seven thousand square feet of the auditorium originally built in fifty-six, and we're adding fourteen thousand square foot for classrooms, offices, and storage. We're also putting in an elevator, which is required. storage. We're also putting in an elevator, which is required because the building did not have an elevator before. Upgraded structural accessibility, life, and safety. The notice proceed was issued in January 16 of 2018. Estimated completion of fall 2019 with a budget of $29 million. Moving to current design projects, this is the LAC Kinesiology Labs and Aquatic Center, funded again by Measure E and LB. Design contract was awarded to Westburg and White Architects in the spring of 2017. The design is going to renovate all our outdoor sports facilities, which includes softball, soccer, introducing new sand volleyball courts, tennis courts, and associated facilities. Design also included a new aquatic center, which includes a 50-meter pool and support buildings for approximately 15,000 square feet. Currently in the construction document design mode, phase I should say, and anticipated construction will start in the spring of 2019 with a budget of 44.2 million. Also, current design is our building M, Multidisciplinary Classroom. This is funded with Measure E, Measure LB, and also Proposition 51 State Funding. It is the first state-funded project utilizing the design-build-delivery method in the state. GKK Works was selected as architect to prepare the bridging design documents and the project requires, of course, demolition of building M and N for a new construction of a three-story 81,000 square foot building for classrooms and office. The building will house language arts, foreign language, computer and office studies. Preliminary document package was submitted to the state chancellor's office for approval in March of 18 and the designs build, the design build entity to be selected by fall 2018. The RFP submissions were due this week. Anticipated construction start of fall of 2019 and construction completion of fall of 2022 with a total project cost of $70 million and state-funded 27.7 million. Current design projects is for LAC building X, our central plant expansion. P2S was selected to prepare, prepare the design documents. The project would consist of expanding the capacity of the existing central plant system for upcoming growth on the 2041 master plan. So the anticipated construction is fall of 2019 and construction completion is spring of 2020 with a total project budget of 6.1 million. Still, current design projects, the PCC, the building M, Construction Trades, also funded with Measure E, LB, and Prop 51 State Funding. The state budget approved funding for preliminary plans only during this fiscal year. So we're carrying forward by hiring HPI architect to select and prepare design documents. Project will consist of renovating the west wing of MM, which houses the HVAC and carpeting department. Project will include demolishing the former alternative fuels section. And anticipated construction, start of 2019, fall of 2019, and construction completion will be in fall of 2020 with a budget of 17.6 million with state-funded at 7 million. Also in current design is the parking structure at the PCC campus on the corner of Walnut and PCH, funded by Measure LB. This is a rendering that was just turned over two, two weeks ago and it's a, a view from the PCH and Walnut corner. HPI architecture was selected to prepare the bridging design documents because this is a design-build-delivery method. Parking structure includes solar on the top floor and between 500 and 600 vehicle parking spaces. So McCarthy Building Company was selected as the design-build entity with an anticipated approval on today's board meeting. Total project budget is 20 point, 23 point million Moving into completed construction projects, as you well know, we completed building QQR funded by Measure E. HPI was the architects. The building housed the electrical program, the robotics lab, and two electrical lab. Notice of completion was awarded at April 24th, 2018 board meeting. Total cost of construction 12.2 and we've already got this building DSA certified, which is probably the quickest we've ever done. Also completed construction is the district-wide monitoring system at both campuses. 600 cameras at the LAC and PCC campus. The notice of completion awarded in May 22nd of 2018 with a budget of $2.6 million.
Questions? Wow. Board members, questions? Chair of the board, trustee Zia, followed by trustee Baxter.
Thank you, Tim, and congratulations. It's going to be hard to not see you. I know you've been tremendous and I've personally have a certain learning mechanism and that's by, you know, being inquisitive. So you've been fantastic in answering my questions throughout these years. My question is on page 17. Have we awarded this? I thought this parking structure is on the agenda tonight for approval with McCarthy.
Yes, thanks for that correction. It is on the agenda tonight.
Okay, because I have quite a bit of questions on that front and on the design-build-delivery method. Was this, how did we choose that delivery method instead of design-bid-build for this particular case? And I'll ask my detailed question on the item. If you could please elaborate on that, that would be fantastic. And the benefits we're going to be getting out of this delivery method instead of the traditional design-bid-build?
Okay. So if I hear you right, your question is why did we select the design-build-delivery method for this project?
Yes.
We've selected that because the, the first design-build project that we had was a parking structure right across the street. It went very well. The projects, the design-build projects experience that I've had throughout my career is that it's a much smoother process that we get the, the projects done on time and on budget. We've done three projects to date at design-build. They've all been on time and on budget with no issues. And so this is a very valid delivery method that has worked for us in the past. And a parking structure is a rather simple structure that can be formatted in the design, design-build-delivery method.
So is this discretionary where we choose the method for each project? Has that, this been the process?
Yes, it is. It is discretionary. There are some projects that don't fit well for the design-build, design-build-delivery method. You know, remodels, for example, are very difficult to do in a design-build-delivery method because it's hard to know what you're, you're going to run up against. So we basically stuck to new construction and then some projects lend better to the design-build-delivery method than others.
Okay. Do we have certain procedures codified that states which ones qualify and what is the particular process followed in the method of selection? Because this is qualification based. It's not, no longer lowest bidder, correct?
It is. But in, in every case, it has been the lowest bidder that we select, including this project.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good to know. And I'm assuming all these projects that you're presenting on tonight, including this one, is subject to the project labor agreement?
Not all of them.
Oh.
There are select ones and Menhoney might know better.
Yeah, this one is, I believe, and we have a list of projects that were approved with that agreement with the CSWP. And I don't have those written for me, but we do have a list of projects that were approved specifically to go through the agreement.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to see that as, as we add new projects, to have the ability and the option to add additional projects to the list as we go forward with the approval of these projects in the coming months. Thank you. That's all I had.
Trustee Baxter?
Yes. First of all, maybe a silly question. What does MEH, MEP stand for?
I apologize. That's mechanical, electrical, and plumbing.
Okay. All right. All right. That makes sense. Next, on page 13, you have the kinesiology lab. Is this just an idea? Because I know part of it's softball and, and swimming and that, it actually looks like building B to me. So I mean, did they just shove a picture in there or?
Yes. No, I should have explained that to you as well. This is a rendering of the aquatic center. So we don't have, we asked them to kind of push through this rendering so that we could have this, but this is the aquatic center. You have two buildings. One, we call them the west building and east building. One, one is for soccer and all the field sports and then the east one is for aquatics.
And it's, Tim, this is on Carson Street?
This is on, this is on Carson and faculty.
Western faculty?
Carson and faculty.
Okay. I got more. Then on the parking structure, who chooses the solar contractor? Does the design-build contractor do that?
Yes, we contract with the general contractor. They select all the subs for that.
So they do all, all that? And so then they're responsible? Okay.
That's correct.
That's it. Thanks. Well, this is a pet peeve of mine. There is no PCC campus. It's the Pacific Coast Campus and the Liberal Arts Campus, not LAC Campus.
Thank you.
It's a pet peeve. Take it for what it's worth.
Other questions? No other questions? Trustee Baxter?
Yes, yes. I have questions.
There we go. Trustee Malulu?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions. So, Tim, I also want to echo trustee Zia in saying that you will definitely leave a very big void on campus with your knowledge and expertise and all the different projects that you've been involved with and we just really value your contribution. So we will definitely miss you. I don't know who will replace you essentially, but that person has very big shoes to fill and I hope you plan on sticking around for a couple of years to properly train that person. I have a couple of questions. One question is the, and trustee Baxter actually asked you, it was about the solar panels. I've seen the, the charging stations throughout campus with the solar panels. I don't know what they're called, but they look like some kind of hitch that you attach to your vehicle and kind of drive somewhere and then you detach it and leave it there. I, I've never seen students actually using them, but I do see them throughout the campus. So I was just wondering if you can just comment on how effective they are and if you have any data that you can share, maybe not now, but later, to how many students actually use those solar charging stations. And then also, at a previous meeting, we had talked about adding portable charging stations to facilities, like to waiting areas or to the cafeteria area. And I was just wondering if that idea is included in bond measure money in terms of the new construction. I know that I visit other colleges and I see different portals. I was just at, gosh, what's it called in Thousand Oaks? I forget what it's called.
More Park.
Purple, I was just there a couple of weeks ago. It's the university, gosh, I forget. Anyway, I was there for a softball game and I went into the gym area and they had, you know, five or six different areas where students were posted up, just charging their phones and their laptops and their iPads. And I just wanted to know if these facilities include that. That's one question. And then I have one more after that.
Okay. So your first question was about the existing EV chargers that we have on campus. Those, those are on our campus as a lease agreement with DC Solar. DC Solar has provided a number of community colleges and universities these chargers free of charge. And we brought them on our campus and situated them where we could to encourage EV charging and try not to take too many other parking spaces. So they've been on our campus for a little over a year now and we're planning on keeping them for the duration of the lease about four more years. They, they are very popular. I don't know the difference between students and staff and faculty, but I do know from personal experience that we do have a lot of faculty and staff that use them. And I'm not, don't have much information on student. And then I think your second question was, do we plan on having more of these charging systems, EV chargers on campus? And the answer is yes. We are currently working with Southern California Edison on a program that they are funding the infrastructure for EV chargers on multiple campuses around the state of California. It's just in its infancy. The program has been approved, so it is going forward. We've had them on campus survey on both of our campuses and they've identified two locations, one location on each campus that we can provide up to about 24 chargers per location. In addition to that, the project that you're working for, looking at right now, P2 parking structure, these projects require EV charging by current code and this parking structure will have up to about 24 EV chargers in it.
Okay. So the, the first question I asked, I got the answer perfect. By the way, I remembered it's called California Lutheran University. That's where I was a few weeks ago. And, but the second part of the question, that wasn't what I was referring to. I don't know what, what I am referring to is called, but these are just units that are in office buildings. They're in waiting areas. They're not those large hitch contraptions. They're, some of them are standalone. I know that we went to Cal State Fullerton with some journalism students and as soon as you walk into the building, you could see all the students flock to this one sitting area with couches because all these little portable charging things were there. I don't know what they're called, but they're not outdoors. They're not in the parking structure. They're standalone. They do have some kind of electrical outlet that they plug right into the wall. And then they'll have like maybe 10 different cords and cables fitting different sized devices sticking out. So students can just walk up and, you know, each one will charge up to 10 different devices. They might have two or three iPhone, two or three Android, two or three regular chargers. So I don't know what those are called, but can the bond fund be used to include that in our facilities, especially with new construction in offices and sitting areas throughout the campus?
The short answer is yes. And we are planning to include those on our new design standards in certain locations. They are currently not in our design standards, so we don't ask for them during the design, but we're moving forward to include that in our future designs.
Okay. Perfect. All right. And my last question, looking at your presentation, I see that you have some ADA improvements or, let's see, ADA, it says like, I'm looking at page 11, the project will address ADA classroom offices, MEP system. That's at the LAC building. But I also noticed that you mentioned some ADA, I guess, updates to the PCC building. And I'm wondering, because, you know, ADA has been around for a long time and we've had to be ADA compliant for many years. Why wasn't the ADA compliance issue addressed prior to all this construction happening on the PCC campus? You know, if so many of the facilities, the, the American Facilities Act came about 1990 and so many of our facilities at the PCC campus are a result of bond measures in 2004, 2008, why weren't ADA facilities implemented then? Why is the issue being addressed now? You know, why wasn't it done right the first time?
So.
So, trustee Malalulu, this is Merhany. So, in
Hi, Merhany.
Hi. So, in short, they were, you know, ninety-nine percent of the spaces were. But there's been a lot of code changes over the year and continued code changes. So, I would take it, I think, a step back further in that the district, this is what we call, the second time we've done what we call a transitional plan. We did one in two thousand six. We did one right now, but this time we're mitigating all the measures. And actually, the district is probably going to do another one again in five, six years, just to make sure we're in compliance. So, you know, to answer your question, we have done it. It's other areas, concrete that has buckled, things like that, that we're addressing to make sure that we mitigate all these areas.
Okay, got it. Okay, I understand. I just want to make sure that with the current bond measure construction project, that we do address all the ADA requirements now and then, you know, have compliance come out and make sure that we've done it right so that we don't have to use additional bond measure money to
Right.
go back and redo something. Which is what it sounds like is happening at PCC. But again, you know, I don't know for sure, and looking at this presentation, it doesn't specifically say that. But just at face value, anything that talks about ADA at PCC is, it just kind of raised a red flag for me because those buildings are so new, they should have been ADA compliant anyway.
Sure. Did I help out answer your question?
Yes, you did. Thank you both very much.
All right.
Other questions, board members? I'd just like to thank you. There's, it's amazing what we do with our bond program and how we continue doing some areas. Some terminology and when the question came up, the fact is, the day we get all up to ADA requirements is the day we're also behind. Because there's law firms that are on college campuses throughout California that are, they make their business of suing community colleges and on ADA requirements because they just are constantly changing. And so, the question was a good question, but it's an ongoing process you have to be diligent on. The other thing that was interesting, I'm looking right here only because it's up there. When we began the process, the term on door lockdown project, that was a concept none of us even really fathomed. And the door lockdown was for security issues with active shooters, things of that nature. So, as far as with facilities, it's amazing how we've evolved, things we've addressed. The question I really had was, it came up on the Aquatic Center. Is that also including the, I'll say, the small gym? Is that looped into the whole, is that a separate project entirely different, the small gym?
The small gym is a separate future project and it's on the 2041 master plan, the dates.
Yeah, because those two, to me, are always pretty close, what's going to happen. And so, that's why I was curious if it was going to be able to line up more appropriately when the aquatic project. My big goal is for Long Beach City College to complete our pool project before the city of Long Beach completes their Belmont Pool replacement, which is going to happen. But it's just really impressive on all the projects that you're doing. The design build, perhaps in the future, that there's always been presentations every few years for the board to understand the different types of projects we've done. I'm a large, I've always been a big proponent, as you know, of the design build. Especially on parking structures, that's always been the forefront because it's pretty easy to know what stall, each one is average cost. But we're also now evolving into other areas, which is, I think, impressive. And for, the concern for most people in the public is that design build. The beauty of that is that it is for a specific cost. And if it goes over that cost, it is on the person building, not on the college. The challenge you have as a college is to make sure you have everything clearly laid out because the big challenge is, when you say X number of doors, well, if you know, specific, be very specific on what kind of doors you want and what kind of hardware you want, they're going to go get the cheapest one possible. So, in design build, it's in the details at the beginning, but once it's done, the cost is, it's going to be completed on that particular time or there's a cost to that contractor. And all the projects that I've seen have always been very successful. We're also at the forefront on this design build. I can't remember which one we had, but we're now evolving, and I think we're the first one in the state of California.
First state funded design build project.
Is that the one?
Yeah, building in.
That's going to be, that's going to be very interesting to see. Hopefully, it's successful. Then I also see in this last budget, the one that just rolled out, we were also awarded some money for one of these projects. I'm not sure which one, there was, I think there were, the governor put six, but also funding for fifteen others. But I thought Long Beach has some funding in there?
Yeah, for building G and H.
So, if the budget goes the way it does in nineteen twenty, hopefully, I believe it's nineteen twenty, the Performing Arts Center, building's G and H will be funded. Not huge.
That's, no, that is, I mean, we just say
That would move up the project five, six years and we greatly need to do a lot of things in that building.
That's a tremendous compliment to the college.
Right.
Because the funding with the state, and that's a whole other area, is there's funding through our bond and there's funding through the different propositions. So, I noticed that come through and it was on an area that I know the governor was very supportive of. So, congratulations on that. The last question I have, only because it's interesting to me. Why do we have an elevator in the auditorium? Elevator to where?
There's access to the balcony seating area and it's a code requirement to provide an elevator to access that.
Okay. It's not, I never viewed that as a balcony, but now I guess
But there's also a basement. So, there's a basement access and then on the west side, we're actually building a new addition that's going to have a first and second level as well.
Okay, that picture was, I mean, that auditorium, that's essentially been gutted and it's all just the, it's the exterior walls. So, congratulations. I mean, it is a phenomenal what the college is doing with all the constructions. I'd mentioned the changes that you've seen in this college since the bonds were passed and thanks to the voters of the cities of our service area. It's been remarkable what you've done and also how you've done it. And because there's been a lot of disasters in the state of California with community college on their bond program. So, should be compliment on it. It's just great to see those projects. That's one of the things we look at, just amazing. So, congratulations to you all.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? If none, we have, this is informational item only, so thank you. And Tim, thank you also for all the years.
Thank you. And if I may, I want to thank the board for all the support over the last decade. I wish everybody the best. I thank all LBCC staff and faculty and administrators that made all of this possible. And to Long Beach City College, I must say, long may you thrive and long may you be great. And thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. You've been a great advocate. And I know you've sat here many times where you've had some, there's been times where Tim made presentations where we, people that knew what was going on were saying, why are you here when you have personal matters to really address? And the professional that you are, you stayed here and did a presentation. I always remember that. And pretty impressive, all your work you've done. We're going to miss you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim, thank you.
All right, we're moving on to the consent calendar. We have the only items that cannot be voted on by the student trustee would be four point seventeen and four point eighteen. With that, could I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Mal
I need to pull something, sorry.
Okay, one moment, let me get a motion first. Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Trustee Malalulu, which one do you want to pull for further discussion?
I have a question on the contract management business support services. And I think that is, let me see. I printed this out as a status order, I'm trying to see what item number that is. It doesn't say at the top of the page. It's contract, I have the contract number, but I don't see where it is on the agenda. Bond contract, let me see.
Bond contract amendments?
I know what it is. It's item four point three. So, I'd like to pull an item on four point three. And I have a question. So, I have a question on one and I'd like another one on another one, same thing, four point three.
Four point three. There's a motion, a second to approve the consent calendar items with the exception of item four point three for further discussion. That's a motion, a second. Question, comments, members of the board? Madam Secretary, please call the roll, consent calendar. Student trustee, again, four point seventeen, four point eighteen. With the exception, you are allowed to vote on the consent calendar.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malalulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Shall I call this?
Student trustee.
Okay.
Trustee Jones?
Aye.
Thank you. Item four point three, this is ratification contracts under one hundred and seventy-five thousand. I'll first begin with, the board have discussion, entertain a motion to approve the items, so we can discuss it. A motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Zia. Four point three, questions, comments? Chair recognizes trustee Malalulu.
Okay, thank you. On one item, I have a question. If you look on page two of three, it's contract number five zero zero six zero point eight. It's the team impact. It's a no cost contract and it's an MOU between the football team and team impact to provide team-based activities, mentoring. I think that's fabulous. My question and then perhaps a request, I might have to push this down further in the agenda, but is this the same program or similar program that enabled the softball team to bring in a young softball player? I believe she was in maybe fifth or sixth grade. If it is the same program or not, I'm not sure who to direct that question to. But my request is, if we can have some kind of report from the athletic department just to let us know, I mean, I think this is fabulous and I think this is exactly the type of community involvement that we need to promote at the college with our athletic teams. If we can get a future report from the athletic department to see what teams are doing this. Again, it's no cost and I think it's great, but I'd like to know more and how many and maybe we can invite some of those young students who are facing life-threatening and chronic illnesses to a meeting and just recognize them. So, that's usually it on that item. And I don't know who would be the one to address that. I'll pause for a second before I move on to the second item.
I'm not sure, I think we're all looking at each other going, and the question is, again, on this one, there's no cost, the team impact. Your question was to potentially have a future report on the details to this?
Yes, if this is the same organization that the softball team participated in several months ago with a young player in the community. And then also, if we can have a report on a future board meeting date from the athletic department to learn more about this program and see what other athletic teams participate.
Well, I can answer the one question about asking for a few other reports is farther into our agenda. We can bring it up at that time, but I don't know who I turn to on this one.
I can address that, this is Marlene Vivian. My understanding is, yes, this is the team impact event that you're referring to with the softball team. We can confirm that and we can certainly bring back a report at a future board meeting to talk about the success of that program and where it's going next.
Perfect, perfect, thank you, thank you. Okay, and the next item that I think might be a little bit more detailed answer is on page three. It's the last item on page three, contract number nine nine seven five six point one. I don't understand what this is. It's a contract with the foundation, it's Los Angeles City College Foundation. And, you know, the amount for one hundred and seventy-three thousand, the term is for, you know, one year. It's a sub-site for the delivery of the Goldman Sachs. I don't understand that, if someone can explain it to me, why? And again, I don't understand why LA City College and we have our own foundation. Maybe we can look into perhaps setting up a relationship with our own City College Foundation? Would that be a conflict of interest? But if someone could please explain this to me? I don't think I've ever seen that. Thank you.
Certainly, this is Marlene. Again, my understanding is that for this program, we operate a program both here as well, as well as in LA. And this represents the operation of the LA program. We are the receiver of the grant and we choose the LA college to be a sub-site to operate the grant in that community as dictated by Goldman Sachs.
Okay, could we use it at our campus? Could we involve our own City College Foundation or try to keep it in-house instead of outsourcing?
The terms of the grant is that the revenue has to flow first through a foundation and then to us. And so, in this case, the revenues come to us through the foundation. We then disperse those funds to the secondary foundation for the operation of the site there in partnership with our college. So, rather than it being a replacement of the program we operate, it's actually an obfuscation of our program. It allows us to have a broader community that we serve rather than just operating the program within our district. Does that help?
Okay, it does help, yes. Okay, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
Other questions? On that one with the, this is with the foundation of the Goldman Sachs. We essentially do the, we are the lead agency, for lack of simple words. And then we hire other colleges and their foundations to do this effort for the Goldman Sachs project. It's been widely successful and very popular. But Long Beach City College is the college that really runs it for the entire LA County and the other colleges in here as well. So, and we've been doing it for quite a while, but once again, it's because of our expertise and our economic development and community development programs and how we're viewed being the college, the agency that can actually run it successfully. And we've been doing so for many years. And the other colleges are happy to have us do that for them. So, no other questions, comments? Entertain a motion to approve, just item five point three. There was a motion, a second, ratification contracts under one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. There's a motion, a second. Student trustee, you will be voting on this one as well. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malalulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Now to human resources, five point one. This is student trustee, you'll be voting on this. Equal employment opportunity fund, multiple methods association model, certification form, fiscal year seventeen eighteen. This is the board of trustees approve and certify this fund. It is just generally, for lack of better word, just bureaucracy and we're moving forward. That's a good, simple way of explaining it. But could I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second to approve, motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter to approve this item. Are there any questions on this item at this time? I don't believe there will be. Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item five point one.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malalulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Aye.
That passes, item five point two, two thousand eighteen to the nineteen. This is salary rates for district employees. Again, student trustee, this is one you will not be able to vote on. This again is, this is for anticipation of any potential financial uncertainties. Does someone want to say this in simple terms? Again, this is like the previous one.
Yes, would you like me to chime in here, trustee Kellogg? Essentially, what this does is, actually, the California Code of Regulations requires that a college pass this article. And that is for the potential purpose that we might undertake increases in salary or even decreases in salary in eighteen nineteen. And before you can do that, the district must pass this resolution, or actually determination.
There we go. I'm sorry, did I put a motion, a second already on this item? I'm sorry, could I entertain a motion? Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Malalulu. I know you raised your hand on that one. She didn't hear it. Any other comments, questions, members of the board at this time? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item five point two. Student trustee, you will not be voting on this item.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malalulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Item five point three. Student trustee, you will not, excuse me, you will not be voting on these. These are employment contracts. And as required by the Brown Act, I will be reading the following. So, let me begin with five point three, employment contract for Eugene Carbonaro Dean's Career Technology Education. A motion, a second, please. Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Zia. On this item, recommended action to the board of trustees approve the employment contract for Eugene. Does anyone call him Eugene? I've never heard I've never heard.
Does anybody call Eugene?
It's what it is. For Eugene, Carbonaro Dean CTE has submitted, the employment contract provides for a term of employment from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. The contract provides for an annual compensation of $135,687 along with health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Motion seconds on the floor. Questions, comments on this item? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 5.3.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
5.3 carries. Congratulations. Next item, 5.4, employment contract. Anthony Pagan, Associate Dean, Career Technology Education CTE. Entertained a motion, second on this item. Student trustee, you will not be voting. Motion by trustee Baxter, or trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. This, the Board of Trustees approved the employment contract for Eugene Pagan. Did I pronounce that right? Associate Dean, Career Technology Education, submitted. Provides for a term of employment from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. Contract provides for an annual compensation of $119,499 along with health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Are there question, comments on this item? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 5.4.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
That motion carries. Congratulations. Item 5.5, excuse me, employment contract. Maria, someone help me on this name. Is it Elk Ewell?
Ek.
Ek Yule. I want to make sure. Maria. Director of Disabled Student Programs and Services. That the Board of Trustees approved the employment contract for Maria Ek Yule, Director DSPS. Employment contract provides for a term of employment from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. The contract provides for an annual compensation of $112,047 along with health, welfare benefits, and life insurance. Did I miss again the motion? Motion, please. Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. There's a motion, second on the floor. Question, comments, members of the board? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 5.5.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
That motion carries. Congratulations. Item 5.6, student trustee, you will not be voting on this one. Employment contract for Jason Avila, Inter Manager Extended Opportunity Programs Services or EOPS. Entertained a motion. Motion by trustee Malauulu, wherever you are, and second by trustee Zia. This is the Board of Trustees approves the employment contract for Jason Avila, Inter Manager EOPS. Contract provides for a term of employment through July 1st, 2018 through December 13th, 2018. The contract provides for an annual compensation of $85,426 along with health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Question, comments, members of the board at this time? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 5.6.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
5.6 carries. Moving on, 5.7, Classified Employment Appointment to the Personnel Commission for Midterm Vacancies. This is the Board of Trustees who accept the nomination of Mr. Thomas Hamilton as the classified staff appointment to the Personnel Commission effective July 16th, 2018 and then noon December 1st, 2019 as submitted. Could I entertain a motion, a second on this item, please? Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Question, and student trustee, you can vote on this one. Question, comments, members of the board at this time? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 5.7.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
5.7 carries. Congratulations, Thomas. So much for retirement. Next item is, I'm sorry, we are now at the, skipped a page. We're at now on the academic senate. This is 6.1, New and Modified Programs of Study. This is an action item. The Board approves a new and modified programs of study effective fall 2008 as submitted. These are programs to meet Title V industrial requirements to respond to advisory committee recommendations and/or to facilitate transfers of programs of study were developed and are modified and approved for their respective college departments and schools. Documentation is reviewed by the Associate Degree General Education Subcommittee and approved by the Committee on Curriculum and Instruction. Could I entertain a motion and a second on item 6.1?
So moved.
New and modified programs of study. Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Question, comments on this item on item 6.1? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll. Student trustee, you will be voting.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Aye.
6.1 carries. 6.2, New and Modified Courses. This again is an action item to asking for the Board of Trustees to approve. These courses have been created or modified to meet Title V requirements, program additional general education, or program options to meet industrial requirements and/or to respond to advisory committee recommendations as previously. Could I entertain a motion, a second on this item?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Zia. Questions, comments on this item on 6.2? Student trustee, you will be voting. Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 6.2.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 6.3, Double Counting Units for Plan A and Major Requirements. Board has requested to approve the double counting of units for Plan A and major requirements as submitted. These are courses that are identified in both general education requirements and required for any major and associate degree. It may be double counted in petition for receiving an associate degree. The ability to double count units for an associate degree will reduce the cumulative units and shorten time to completion. Documentation be reviewed and approved by the Committee on Curriculum and Instruction. Entertained a motion, approve on item 6.3, please. Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Zia. Questions, comments? Student trustee, you will be voting on this. Question, comments, members of the board? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 6.3.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Aye.
Item carries. Thank you. Item 7.1, Tentative Budget. This is an action item, but the Board approved a tentative budget for 2018-19 as submitted. This is according to California Code, directed from the Chancellor's Office, which states that "on or before the first day of July, the governing board of each community college district shall develop and adopt an attempted budget." Let me first ask for a motion, a second.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Questions, comments at this time, but hearing none, we are going to have a report. So Superintendent President, I'll turn to you first.
Thank you. We want to welcome Vice President of Business Services, Marlene Dunn, to her very first budget presentation. Welcome. You and your team have done a tremendous job in putting together our tentative budget. A huge kudos to you and the entire campus community. You're going to see some fantastic news in this budget presentation tonight that I think you're going to find really interesting. Long Beach City College, as you know, last May was sitting on a formidable $10.7 million deficit. We have been able to chop $5.9 million from that deficit, which is just an absolutely huge accomplishment. We've done it through a variety of cost savings and a very aggressive enrollment push. So I want to congratulate everyone. You're going to see, Marlene is going to show you that our total deficit has been reduced to $4.8 million. We've been able to do that without layoffs and without cuts to instructional programs. One of the ways we've been able to do that is to offer a supplemental entire employee retirement plan so that so many were able to take advantage of tonight. So I really want to congratulate everyone who's been able to do it. We have work ahead of us to cut the rest of the way. We, in the next few months, will be working on that, on that remaining structural deficit to get us back on solid financial ground. So congratulations, everyone. And Marlene, take it away.
Thank you so much. Every budget tells a story, and I think the story told by this budget is really unique and is reflective of where the state of California stands with its approach to community college funding and where we stand as an individual and unique organization. In the presentation this evening, I'm going to review the state budget, talk about how our budget aligns with the board goals, strategic plan goals, institutional priorities, the influence of the Budget Advisory Committee, and of course, our FDEs history and projections since that does drive the bulk of our revenues. And then a discussion of the remaining portions of our budget. I'll conclude the presentation discussing our future challenges. As you're well aware, when we develop the tentative budget, we do so based on the state's May revise proposal as presented by the governor. Since that time, there have been tremendous changes in the components of the state budget. What's first important to know that all of those changes affect the out years more than it affects our budget year of 2018-19. That at the May revise, the consideration of the new funding formula was paramount and we'll review how that's changed and what has affected our funding and what has not. So beginning what was in the May revise, we had funding proposed, and forgive that, that's a little update. At the state level for growth, we are projecting no revenue for growth in our district. At the state level, funding for COLA was projected uniquely, and I'll go into this a little bit more in a moment, but LBCC will be what's called a hold harmless district. And according to the May revise, did not get a COLA, but rather got one-time funding in lieu of a COLA. And then the state provided funding at the state level for transition to the new formula. The new funding formula, rather than being based entirely on just our FDEs counts and a number of campuses or centers, would divide that up into the bulk being based on that same base grant, but a significant portion being driven by low-income students, another portion being driven by the performance, success rates of those students as measured in completions. You'll note that the division here is 60% base, 20% low income, excuse me, completion rates, and 20% low income. Since this point, what's been settled at the state budget, in the budget bill presented to the governor, not yet signed by the governor, is a transition to this rating level over three years. The first year being 70, third, excuse me, 70, 20, 10. So the first year would be primarily weighted on the base grant. Secondarily weighted on low-income students, and then thirdly weighted on those completion rates. That would increase until 2020-21, where we would then see this 20, 20, 60 structure. The intent stated by this transition is to allow community college districts to react and respond to the new funding formula and that structure. To provide us with a little bit of time to implement strategies that focus on those completion rates before we are punished for not performing as they went to in year one. And that was a critical component of the eventual negotiated funding formula as it stands. Again, this is contained within the proposed budget as passed by the legislature, not yet signed by the governor. The hold harmless provision is another area of critical change. As proposed in May, we would only have a two-year hold harmless as presented here, and as I mentioned, just one year of one-time COLA. That has since changed into a three-year hold harmless, increased each year by an ongoing COLA. Again, what's presented in the budget you're hearing tonight is the hold harmless for 2018-19 plus a one-time COLA. Really, it's in 1920 and 2021 that these amendments to the budget really affect us for the better. So our 1819 funding will be the same as what's proposed in this budget. These changes really affect our ability to continue to operate 1920, 2021, and then show our reaction to these changes. This also says the end of summer shift. However, in the final budget, the summer shift is back in, so we'll be better able to manage and have consistent FDEs counts moving forward. That will be partially offset, though, by the three-year rolling average, which is still contained in the formula. The May revise had a whole series of other state program funding. I will share with you that those have been juggled around a bit. For instance, the $143.5 million that was previously identified for deferred maintenance and instructional equipment has been cut by 80%. At the same time, other programs have been proposed. Across the board, the new programs that have been proposed don't yet have enough specificity to allow us to determine what our share of those individual pieces of the pies will be. Much of that language is within the trailer bill, which is still going through the process, and much of that language leads it to the Chancellor's Office to determine the method of allocation. So unfortunately, at this moment, I cannot provide you with a lot of specificity about our ability to participate in those new programs, but when we come back before the final budget, I will be able to share that information with you. We heard earlier about our bond programs and the projects that we have. I am happy to share that our inclusion in the 21 proposed, Proposition 51 facility bond projects still remains. So we will still receive the funding that we were so eagerly anticipating for buildings M&amp;M and for the building MM. The online community college proposal still held at the same rate. So the state budget will contain the $120 million for the establishment of the online community college. However, in addition to that amount, they did establish a pot of about $35 million for competitive grants for individual community college districts to help participate in the development of the programs, courses, and content for the online college. As I mentioned, the budget proposal we have before you is in alignment with your goals, with the strategic plan, as well as with the institutional priorities. These next several slides show how we've determined that each one of our activities aligns with those goals and those priorities so that we have alignment throughout the organization that the budget supports and the priorities versus driving the priorities. The Budget Advisory Committee was critical in developing the budget assumption highlights. These highlights, as we go through them, reflect a continuation of our 2017-18 operations at the conclusion of this year. So all the activities that we were able to engage in that helped reduce our deficit continue to move forward with the next steps being the continuation of developing those Our FDS funded and total target is $20,133, but again, for the next three years, beginning 2018-19, we're at a hold harmless revenue limit, which means that we are protected against both the funding formula and variances in our enrollment. We are reflecting a half a percent deficit factor, which is reflective of most recent years' deficit cuts to our base funding. And of course, we continue the principles of total cost of ownership. Our goals are to maintain a 5.5% minimum unrestricted reserve, although our total goal is really 15% with a short-term goal of 12.5%. This level of reserves is critical because it allows us as an organization to be flexible and to respond to changes in funding caused by the state level that are out of our control. I'm sure many of you have heard Governor Brown's concern that we are in our second-longest recovery as a state economy and that eventually our economy is cyclical and we will experience a downturn. The only question is when and how deep. And so it's critical that we preserve our flexibility to respond to changes. The STIRS and PERS costs continue to increase, and we'll talk more about those, but that is a proportion of our budget that is outside of is a proportion of our budget that is outside of our control, yet we are subject to fairly significant increases, and we are anticipating a 2.2% increase in our health and welfare Looking at our historical trend of FTES, we felt it was important to share this slide with you, showing that pattern, and really showing the pattern of how we've utilized the summer shift to provide consistency in our funding level as we fall in and out of stabilization, and really giving us the basis for that goal of 20,000. So you can see that highlighted in the upper tiers of each bar graph, in the blue and the purple areas, the teal and the purple areas, those represent the FTES that we are shifting from either the previous or following year in order to maintain stable level funding. As I said, moving forward, the summer shift remains, but the new funding formula does include a three-year rolling average, and so the dynamics of how that summer shift work will indeed change. When we look at our expenditures over the course of 2017-18, and this is the adopted budget rather than the tentative budget, you can see that we have managed to make inroads in reductions, but that we anticipate our 2018-19 expenditures to increase again. This is due to several different factors, not the least of which is an increase in STIRS and PERS contributions. And so looking at those revenues and those expenditures specific to the unrestricted general fund, you can see that we have managed to reduce our 2017-18 deficit to just a little over 4.7 million. We anticipate in 2018-19 that that deficit will increase to 2.6, excuse me, 6.7 million, an increase in the deficit of 1.9 million. I would like to share that this does not reflect the impact in 2018-19 of the SERP, since the SERP was just finalized, and we hadn't had the opportunity to take advantage of those savings here. I would also like to say that this is a good opportunity to identify that if we made no changes, our story for 2018-19 would be a deficit of 6.7%. But much like what was accomplished in the 2017-18 budget, we anticipate being able to identify a solution for much of the deficit in 2018-19. Looking at our revenue in 2018-19, we did show an increase in the apportionment, much of that due to the COLA we're going to be granted, and I will just say that when we come back to in the final budget, rather than this being a one-time resource allocation, this will reflect $3.2 million as the ongoing COLA. That's really critical, because that means in 2019-20, our starting point is $3.2 million We are reflecting additional monies, because we don't have a projected faculty obligation penalty in 2018-19, but at the same time, we are anticipating small decreases in mandated cost and lottery revenue. And the bulk of our revenue is within our principal apportionment from the state. That is what drives our agency's operational budget. As we look at expenditures, again, you'll see that we have an increase in salaries and benefits, largely due to step and column, STIRS and PERS increases, other increases. This again does not yet reflect the impact of the SERP. I will also point out that as we looked at how we were doing our BPRs and implementing those costs using one-time resources, that we had previously reflected those expenditures all in one year. We have now since decided to reflect them over the course of three years to better reflect what is actually happening. And because it is an expenditure of one-time revenues, that does appear as deficit spending, but that is purposeful deficit spending and not structural deficit spending. As we look at those increases to the expenditures in 18-19, we have hired seven new full-time faculty. That was critical. Those were identified earlier this year, very purposeful, and we have had a small increase, which is under a million, to classified salaries, with the assumption that vacancies will be filled. Of course, as I mentioned, the SERP will impact that. What's notable is the STIRS and PERS increases, and when we say 2.5% increase for STIRS or PERS, and 1.85% increase for STIRS, I want to clarify, that's 1.85% increase of STIRS salaries. The actual cost increase is much greater. So we're talking 1.5%, that's of salaries versus the percentage of increase, and you'll see that dynamic in just a moment. We do have an increase in contract services and operating expenses. BPR is also driving this. As we're implementing those solutions, those are through the assistance of contract services for implementation only. Once we get past implementation, then we are now running with it, and you'll just see software licenses or other items like that, but it does revert back to staff to operate those. And of course, you'll see how we spend our expenditures. Because we are a service agency, of course, the majority of our expenditures are in salaries and benefits. Historically, we have hovered around the 89 to slightly over 90% in salaries and benefits. The one dip was in 2013-14, which I understand was a time of reductions in personnel. Otherwise, historically, this agency has hovered around 90%. In a moment, I'll show you another slide and talk a little bit deeper about that. You'll also see that the deficit spending has happened most recently. This is a function of both the increases in STIRS and PERS, and other one-time deficits, and an ongoing deficit, operational deficit, which again, we have addressed by more than half its size in 2017-18, and now that we've sized the problem for 2018, we'll be able to address that even further. So a little bit more about the salaries and benefits. I mentioned that we have hovered historically around that 90% level. And I believe the fact that we have been able to keep it at 90% despite the increase in costs in STIRS and PERS speaks a lot to our ongoing management of those expenses. However, this is a level that is higher than what's typical for a community college district, and this shows our opportunity to really create a more fiscally healthy community going forward, and I think continuing our focus, utilizing the SERP, and continuing some of those initiatives will help us manage this historical level of spending. And so when we project out another year into 2019-20, you can see how 2019-20 becomes very problematic. Let me first reassure you that just the factor that we have ongoing COLA improves the 19-20 fund balance by $6 million. That tells you how important ongoing COLA is, because we have ongoing increases in our primary expenditure segment. And again, identifying the problem, identifying our ongoing structural deficits allows us to best address it. I like to share that a dollar saved today is $3 shared three years from now, when we're able to address those ongoing expenditures. Our future budget challenges do include our enrollment and our ability to react to the new funding formula. Luckily, we now have three years rather than two years to affect change, and to modify how we look at data and utilize data to devote our resources to those things that pay. Unfortunately, the STIRS and PERS remain a major source of a misdirection of our resources. Reminding you that the STIRS increases are codified in legislation, and the PERS increases are estimates based on the actions of the Bird's Board, Bird, excuse me, the PERS Board annually, you can see that in 2018-19 alone, we are spending $2 million more than we did last year to solve what essentially is a state problem of an imbalanced retirement fund. When you look at the conclusion of the increases, you'll see that it's about $9 million. I would tell you that that's $9 million annually. If you compounded the total misdirection of all these revenues, you are looking in excess of $20 million. And that is an area of continued concern. Again, like I said, we've increased $1.5 million last year, and still managed to hold our expenditure levels to about 90%.
Hey, Marlene, I'm going to stop you right here. What do you mean $9 million annually? I see that as a cumulative. What am I missing here? It says total approximately $9 million.
I was talking about the compounded effect. So if we started in 2017-18, it's obvious that we spent 1.5 million more than the prior year. When we look at 2018, we're spending $2 million more than 17-18, but when I add the two together, that's $3.5 million we're spending in 2018 that we would not have used for that purpose if not for these increases. So comparing the year-over-year expenditure, that we've had a budget increase in STIRS and PERS through no action of our own.
Yeah, I just want to understand, you said it's $9 million annually. Did I misunderstand? Because that doesn't compute. It shows about $1.6 million one year, and then next year, it's $2 million.
And forgive me for confusing the issue. I often hear people talk about the year-over-year increase, or in this case, saying that by '24-25, we'll be spending $9 million more a year than we spent in 2016. And that's an excellent story to say, but when you add up the misdirection of these resources in each year, so in 17-18, 1.5 million, plus $2 million 18-19, so that's $3 million we spent for STIRS and PERS, plus another $2 million in 19-20, so now that's nearly $5 million. There is an impact, and that is a diversion of our resources to PERS and STIRS.
Yeah, there's no question about that, but I think it's misleading to say it's $9 million a year. It's $9 million over the span of from 2017 to 2015 cumulatively, so let's just be clear about that.
Yes, correct.
That's just the one thing, I wanted to make sure I didn't misunderstand, because $9 million a year is quite hefty. Thank you.
Thank you. And so again, we do have some future budget challenges. Our efforts will be to identify a plan to address the $6.7 million in deficit spending, and bring that back to you for your consideration, to focus those solutions in ways that don't impair our ability to react to the new funding formula, that support our initiatives to improve enrollment, to improve retention, and to improve completion, while still identifying those opportunities to reduce expenditures when they don't serve the goals of our district, and to work together to make sure that our data reflects our anticipated successes, and allow us to be flexible in considering actions that we had not before to continue that improvement. And before I conclude, I would like to thank the team. This is the beginning of my sixth week with the district, and Mr. John, excuse me, Thomas? Thomas? Thompson, thank you. I knew I was getting it wrong, he's on vacation this week, but he and his team, including Sam, have done a phenomenal job in supporting me through my transition here and into assisting me in developing the budget, so I want to make sure I give them kudos for all of their hard work.
Questions, members of the board at this time? Chairperson, trustee Zia.
I just wanted to thank you, Marlene. I know this was your first presentation, you did a tremendous job. I understand that we're going to be getting a plan as far as some of the strategic opportunities that we're going to be looking at in gaining some efficiencies when it comes to those gaps with the budget and some of these deficits. I am particularly keen, as you know, over the years, I may sound like a broken record, but professional services is the Achilles' heel of any agencies I've ever worked for, and I see that here. I know we have an increase of about $800,000. It may be nominal in the grand scheme of things for some folks, but I think where we can gain those opportunities in cost savings and recover them, that would be fantastic and be as frugal as possible, and I'm sure you guys are taking that approach, and I look forward to getting that report on August 2nd. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Trustee Malalou? I will say that the...
Did you call on me? Sorry.
I just asked a question, because I didn't see anything on my phone. Did you have a question at this point? Not to put you on the spot.
Yes, I do. I didn't mean to cut you off, so I can wait until if you were going to ask it.
No, trustee Malalou, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Marlene, thank you for that presentation, and formally welcome you. I know I thought that we would see you at the last meeting, and I'm, you know, unfortunately, I'm not physically there at this one, but you know, formally welcome you to our board meeting. I have a question. So I'm looking through this budget, and I don't see, you know, 88 pages, so I'm trying to go through all 88 pages here, but I don't see where on the budget presentation that you've provided, it would say, but what is the anticipated reserve, the percentage in the beginning of fiscal year 18-19? I don't, I can't find that. I can't even find where it would be, so I think I may have just scrolled too far, but and I see, I remember seeing something about a goal of 12.5%, but I wasn't, I'm not sure what that was. Does that ring a bell to you?
It does, it does. If I could direct you to Slide 30, that on Slide, correct, Slide 30 shows that we project a 13.5% reserve, so that's a reserve of our ending fund balance as compared to our total expenditures. And of course, the concern here is that in addressed, it would fall to 2.8% in 1920.
Okay, Marlene, let me stop you right there. I don't see that. I'm on Slide 30, because Long Beach Community College District 2018-19 tentative budget. Where are you?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was referencing the presentation. Are you looking at the fund, the actual budget document?
I am looking at the actual budget document, page 30. Okay, so that's page 26. So the numbers on my screen don't coincide, so Slide 30 PDF is actually page 26. So which, at the bottom of what you want me to look at, what page are you referring to?
So I'm sorry, if I referenced the presentation, the presentation indicates 13.5%. The total fund balance is on page 24, however, it's not expressed on that page as a percentage of the total expenditures, and so I can identify for you at a later point exactly what page of the budget reflects the percentage of the reserves, but it is 13.5% for 2018-19. And your other, and your other question...
13.5, okay. Yes, because there's a slide that had 12.5, so I was wondering if that was it, the 12.5%?
The 12.5% is the goal set by this institution. So on page 17 of the presentation, the institutional effective fund balance goal is set at 15% with the short-term goal set at 12.5%. So the minimum is 5.5%, but again, that doesn't allow us flexibility to react to changes at the state level or economy. Maintaining a fund balance of 12.5% or 15% provides us that flexibility and allows us to take a more thoughtful approach to managing our budget rather than being reactive.
Okay, got it. Okay, I'm looking... Okay, I'm looking at the PDF now, and you're saying page 24?
Page 30 of the presentation and page 17 of the presentation will provide you that information.
Okay, got it. Okay, I see it. All right, yeah, I'll probably need to follow up to ask further questions. I don't, I don't want to take up too much time. If the information is there and I'm just not seeing exactly what you're referring to, then I'll just have to follow up with you because I understand what you're saying. I just want to make sure that we have the right information, especially because if this information goes public without changes to our budget, I just, I don't want the wrong information or information to not be interpreted properly. So I want to be clear, and then when people ask me questions, I want to make sure that I have the right answers. So I'll just have to follow up with you, but thank you, thank you.
Certainly, thank you.
Other questions at this time? I just, a few things in here, I just want a more of an observation for the future. On the budget that came out for, from the governor's office, in there, there was money, there was money allocated, off the top of my head, it's 40-plus million dollars. And as I was talking to superintendent president last week when we were preparing for this, that $40 million is set aside for first-year students to have a free year, a free semester, I should say, maybe a full year. They have put that in place as their way to address what we've done here with our college promise, allowing our first students to have a free year. That is now in the budget, 40-plus million dollars. When it was being, when it was being discussed, and I was just really strongly suggested the college look at that, because the question I had at the time was, that's not fair to Long Beach City College because through our college promise, we provide that now. The answer was that we, as a college, could pursue that money to provide the first year free through the state program. By the way, that program is for all students. It's for all students, no economic indicators, all students. If we can capture that for the first year, and then we can roll our college promise into the second year, that is doable, it's allowable, and it's something I think we should really pursue because it's in the budget, a large amount of money, and it's just a great opportunity to where then we can then provide not just one year, but two years of free college tuition. That's one point. The other point in there, and I know it's of interest to some of my colleagues, there was a $10 million budget allocation in there to address the needs of students to have issues with food. And when I say issues with food, they don't have any. So I don't know the requirements, but it is there. It's $10 million. It is something that I know we have looked at all, and every college has been addressing these issues. But those are some, those are some budget items. It's a one-year, but it's a $10 million, if I remember correctly, that we, as a college, should really look at on how we can capture some of that money here for the college, for our students. Again, it's in the budget. Those are two areas that beyond everything else, I think, is something that we should really take some time to pursue because at the end, it would, it would make it a college experience more affordable. In the, and I don't know if trustee Malauulu was trying to get to that, in the, I'm looking at the Budget Advisory Committee on their highlights, maintain a 5.5 minimum unrestricted reserve. The board had a goal also, and I want to say it was in that same area, isn't that correct? To maintain that, that reserve? Or am I talking apples and oranges here?
Are you asking me or...
No, no, I'm asking vice president Dunn.
Yeah, unsure. Let me double-check for you. I believe that the goal, the 15% is, would be consistent with that, but I'd like to double-check that and come back to you to confirm.
Okay. It's important because again, there still has the challenge of when you reach a certain level with your reserves, which is happening, you suddenly put yourself on the chancellor's watch, watch list that changes a lot of things on your finances. So I think that's a good, the back, the Budget Advisory Committee, if they made that recommendation, it goes in line with the board had as well. We dropped below that, so it's something we should probably look back at again. And the other items in there, again, with STIRS, PERS, all the other areas, the biggest challenge, of course, we all know what it is, with declining enrollment because of the smaller service area students and, and the, this new budget formula, which at the time I think everyone was very concerned about, but again, trying to address where the goal, and I'll just reiterate for in the future, the goal is that the funding formula base for community colleges in California is based on the 1960 master plan, which it's obsolete. There's only a few districts that actually have growth, and we're not one of them, nor is most urban colleges. So this is the first step by the governor and the chancellor's office to get away from that funding formula that is no longer practical in today's community colleges. It's going to take a little bit of challenge. They've given us the three years to look at it, but it's something that I think, when we started, a lot more people were concerned. There's still our challenges in there, but I think the idea of getting away from the old funding process is a smart one because it just wasn't realistic anymore. So again, this is a tentative budget, the real budget, whatever that means, was showing up, but the challenges are there. But I just wanted to make sure those two items, that, that money set aside for first, first-year students and the one regarding for food are two areas in there that I think we should really pursue. And besides that, congratulations and welcome to community college budgets.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments at this time? This item is an action item. We do have to vote on it. Student trustee, you're allowed to vote on this one. Congratulations.
Good sounds.
So there is a motion and a second on this item. Any other question, comments? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the tentative budget.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Student trustee Jones?
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 7.2, this is the five-year construction plan for 2020 to 2024. This will be an action item. It's the board of trustees approve the annual submission of the district's five-year construction plan. Authorized superintendent president, the district has signed the formal documents that authorize action on behalf of the district as submitted. This is an item, again, the five-year plans are an annual document required by the state chancellor's office. And let me begin with asking for a motion and a second on this item.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Malauulu. I see all your hand lift up there. Yeah, you seconded it. 7.2, five-year construction plan. Questions, comments on this item? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, could please call the roll. Student trustee, you will be voting on this item.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Student trustee Jones?
Thank you. Madam carries. Item 7.3, this is the award of the previously discussed design-build services for the P2 parking structure. This is a, this is going to require an action. The board of trustees authorize vice president business services or designate to enter into and execute a design-build service contract and authorize stipend payments of $20,000 to design build entities. Not awarded the contract as submitted. This is again with McCarthy Building Company, and we had this discussion previously about what it is. Is there, I first entertain a motion to approve the award of the design-build services.
Don't move.
Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Zia. Question, comments, members of the board at this time on 7.3? Chair recognizes trustee Zia.
Thank you, President Kellogg. I am a little bit puzzled as to why we're paying $20,000 for the rejected firms, and that's what I was asking about earlier, about the process that we have in place. I certainly don't think, I mean, these are Swinburne and Harper, and these are huge companies, and it's the cost of doing business. Can someone, can someone help me understand? Was this, first of all, if it was part of the condition of the qualification process, what was the rationale behind that thinking? And two, are we obligated to pay this?
Yes, we are obligated to pay this. I'm going to start from the bottom of the question and go back up. But the, essentially, the firms that we've dealt with, or the process that we've done in the past, we have provided, we have gone through this process. And we found that, and we're not the only district, I think other agencies that have gone through this process, that we've worked with, that we know of also have done this. It's essentially, there's a lot of work involved in producing this document to get to this point, and there's a lot of legwork, there's a lot of agencies that they have to deal with to make sure, to see what will work in the package that they have to create. So there is a certain cost associated with it on their end. And so, and if I'm not mistaken, a portion of this is also part of the state, is also state-funded, correct? Not this, okay. But it is something that a lot of work and time is put into it, and we do recognize that. And a lot of that is still essentially, you know, we feel useful to us, and so we want to see. It also, I think, makes the price more accurate in the legwork that's involved. In this case, there are multiple agencies involved, not just the city, but since the PCH was right there, Caltrans was involved, just within the city alone because of all the utilities, multiple utilities within the city was involved. So we, we believe that I think a lot of time was needed on their end and money that they had to spend. So they produced the set of document for us that we can look at, that we felt very comfortable with, and I think all the agencies that we know of all provide some allowance for that.
So Caltrans was involved in building a parking structure?
Not building a parking structure, for, to make, the, there's a whole permitting process because of PCH is essentially...
Highway.
Highway. They vetted a lot of all that with them also, and so, and that's just one of the agencies, yeah.
And are we going to be, who set the, first of all, whose brilliant idea was this, to pay these firms $20,000?
I think it was a collective effort within the facilities department, and we did discuss that with our previous vice president before Marlene Dunn was here.
Okay, so it's a legacy issue. So why $20,000? I mean, how much are we going to be in for? What's the fiscal impact? Is that $40,000 total or $60,000?
$40,000. It's just for the two entities that didn't get awarded.
Okay, so the $40,000, and we're going to own their design essentially? Is that what the benefit is?
It's not a full design. It's just that for us, we're able to actually see what they came up with, and in order for them to come up with a value, they have to, you know, do a big presentation, if you will. But, you know, it is $40,000, $40,000 for us to be able to view what they've done, and the options were pretty open, wide open. It was, it was great to see. But again, it is certainly not the only agencies that go through this. We've, we've kind of made sure of that, and we believe, I think, if we didn't have any allowance, that we probably wouldn't have much folks to come in because they realize there's a lot of time spent in that, too.
Perhaps that's why we need to go with design bid build and spend less money paying these firms to bid on our projects. I am, I have a fundamental disagreement with the way we've done, we're doing this. This is nothing against you guys. You're fantastic, professional. I just don't think it's fiscally prudent to be paying firms to become, to come up with a design and build when we have the discretion to go with design bid build and pre-qualify contractors, make sure they're responsible bidders. And I like to have our team look at that. I've asked for this for about four years now, and I think it's time that we look at the policy, setting a policy for a responsible bidder and distinguishing what we identify as fitness, capacity, and performance when we're talking about a responsible bidder so we don't have to get into these circumstances. With that said, I'm going to be voting no on this item tonight. Thank you, Mad Hani.
No problem. Question, comments? To service a counterpoint on that one, I think I'm probably the one that has had to do design build bidding, and if someone came to me and said that I was going to have to go through the details, which is, as I mentioned, every door, every hardware, every, the paint, the quality of the paint, the color of the paint, the lights, the type of lights, it is one of the most elaborate because I'm essentially saying to, in the bid, that I will do it for X amount of dollars, and that's it. And if my bid process is flawed, unlike the traditional way where I can be much more general about it and get through the RFQ if I'm qualified, or an RFP where I can then do an interview, and then we discuss the project and we start billing, that's where you have more change orders, which you don't have traditionally in a design build. So just the counterpoint on that one, and from experience, that if you want to take the approach of not helping contractors for bids, I will just predict right now, you will probably not get many people submitting because even in the project process now, we, as, as those people out there that are, you know, bidding at work at colleges, you look at the environment, whether they're doing the process for, actually, they want to find a bidder, or they're just doing to go through the fundamental process and that's really it. You have to make that decision. But when you're really doing design build, it becomes such a detail, then if you don't, if you're not compensated, most of your major individuals, they're either going to try to roll it into the winning contract, but that makes it challenging. And so what is, essentially, what I've seen is you don't get people bidding, and you want the good quality people doing it. So even though it's money spent at the front end, and I understand that, that, but because of design build and what it is, it actually brings probably value back to the college, and you get the type of contractors that are bidding on it, and that's what I've seen throughout the state on these type of contracts, and that's why we do it here. So if you don't want to, that's a decision you go to, but I'll just throw it out there, that the chances are the type of quality you're probably going to get is not as good or completely non-existent, and because they're, they're in the business to make money, but they're also, they can't afford to, to just submit bids for the sheer sake of it because they are pretty elaborate, especially design build, so.
President Kellogg, can I just, not to belabor the point, and again, this is, it could be an ideological difference of opinion, and after 21 years in being in construction, I can tell you that if it were a bridge, I could understand the sophistication of the effort that it would require. It's a parking structure, folks. This is not a Gerald Desmond Bridge or a courthouse we're building, and that's why I'd like to have a better idea of the methodology and the rationale and the thought process that goes through in selecting these projects of which one is qualified as design build and what kind of value we're getting, what kind of value proposition. And perhaps it could be codified by way of a policy like other agencies have it. We can curb those issues of getting change order happy contractors or claim-prone contractors by pre-qualifying them and making sure that they, we have their past performance checked. And that is something that I have personally done, other agencies that I've worked in. And I recommend we take that approach because it borders on the subjective front a little bit in this case, and that's where I take exception. But I, I see your point, President Kellogg, and I respectfully disagree, and I think maybe we should call for the vote.
Well, it's the board prerogative, whatever are the colleges, however you want to do it. I just wanted to give a perspective from what takes place with a lot of the colleges, whether it's a parking structure or not. But anyway, it's for the board to decide in the future. Other question, comments on this item? Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second. Student trustee, you can vote on this item. Please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Nay.
Trustee Jones?
Upstaying? 7.4, final project proposal and initial project proposal. This is an action item. The board of trustees approve the final project proposal for the, did I just skip? For the PCC campus, sorry, trustee Baxter. MM Construction Trades, the initial project proposals for the LAC buildings, B renovation and the PCC classroom building as submitted. These are the, again, this is a, just for the, the process going through to moving towards the construction, the initial project proposal, the final project proposal is what you do through the state, through the state of California on all projects. So pretty, it's standard operating procedure. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Questions, comments on, on the item 7.4? Student trustee, you will be voting. Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunnyzia?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Aye.
That item carries, 7.4. We're now at 7.5. This is a resolution cash flow borrowing from the LA County Treasurer. This is, again, an action item. Student trustee, you will be voting on this. The Board to adopt resolution number 062618A to authorize short-term borrowing of up to 113.7 million from the LA County Treasurer as submitted. Again, this is something that we've done in the past. So could I entertain a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Questions, comments, members of the Board at this time on this item. Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call a roll on item 7.5.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunnyzia?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Aye. That motion carries. Item 7.6, resolution cash flow temporary interfund cash borrowing. This is an action item. Student trustee, you will be allowed to vote on this item. The Board of Trustees adopt resolution number 062618B to authorize short-term borrowing between funds of up to 17 million as submitted. Again, this is something we have done in the past. Can I entertain a motion in a second, please? Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Malauulu. Questions, comments, members of the Board? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call a roll on item 7.6.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunnyzia?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 7.7, resolution liability and workers' compensation coverage for volunteers. Board of Trustees adopt this resolution, adopting and declaring for the purpose of workers' compensation liability insurance, that persons authorized to perform voluntary service shall be deemed an employee of the district as submitted. District recognizes the need and/or for, and the benefits derived from the individuals providing volunteer service to the district. So this is pursuant to California Labor Code. The state legislature has seen fit to allow school districts to qualify for coverage pertaining, providing the governing board has adopted resolution, thus the resolution. Entertainer motion in a second on this item?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. On item 7.7, resolution. Question, comments, members of the Board at this time? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunnyzia?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Aye. That item carries. Item 7.8, resolution agreement with California Department of Education for Childcare. Student trustee, you will be voting on this item. Does the Board of Trustees adopt the resolution authorizing the district to enter into grant agreement CN 93184.3 with the California Department of Education as submitted? Provides funding for the district to general childcare development services through its two child development centers effective July 1, 2018 through June 3, 2019. Could I entertain a motion in a second, please, on this item?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Zia. Questions, comments? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call a roll on item 7.8.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunnyzia?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Aye. Motion carries. 7.9, resolution agreement with California Department of Education, state preschool program. Student trustee, you will be voting on this. The Board of Trustees adopt resolution authorizing the district enter to a grant agreement with the Department, California Department of Education as submitted. Provides funding for the district to provide preschool programs and development services through its two child development centers effective July 1, 2018 through June 3, 2019. California Department of Education requires the approved resolution by the Board of Trustees in order to award the grant. Motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Questions, comments on item 7.9? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunnyzia?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Aye. That motion carries. Trustee Malauulu, you sound like you had a, you weren't sure on that one. Student, item 7.10.
I'm losing you a little bit as I, my signal, it keeps going in and out, so I'm actually having to walk around the room. I don't know what's happening, so I hope you guys can hear me okay.
You're good. 7.10, approved amendment to institutional membership for 2018, 2019. This is an action item. Student trustee, you will be voting. Board of Trustees authorize approval of the addition of the Community College League of Californias to the district institutional membership for 2018, 19, approved at the May 22 meeting. It was inadvertently left off, so therefore it's on this agenda. I'll entertain a motion in a second, please, on this.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Malauulu. Questions, comments?
I have a little comment.
Chair recognizes trustee Malauulu.
Yes, I know that the actual list was included in our main meeting, but I think for reference, it should have been included again in this meeting. And I know that our Board Secretary is not there right now, but just in the future, whenever we do have to revisit an item, I do think that we should include the original list just for reference. I know that only one item was left off, but it would just be good to be able to see it again, because I'm having to kind of go back to try to remember what was on there. So it's just a small comment, but if someone would just take note of that. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Other comments, questions? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call a roll on item 7.10.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunnyzia?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Upstain?
Next, that item is approved. Item 7.11, student trustee, you will be allowed to vote on this. Approval of new board policy administrative regulation 6018, accessibility of information and communication technology. Action item, recommend that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt board policy administrative regulation 6018 on accessibility of information and communication technologies submitted, is in accordance with established practices. Board policy administrative regulations, these are recommended results for our ongoing review to ensure compliance with current education legal codes and accreditation standards. Could I entertain a motion in a second on this item, please?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Questions, comments, members of the Board at this time? Hearing none.
I have a-
Chair recognizes trustee Malauulu.
I just want to know if this item is included on the agenda for this meeting as a standard procedure, or something that has to happen every so often periodically, or if it has something to do with the malware, you know, hacking that we had a couple of months ago. I just don't know how timely, you know, the accessibility of information, board policy revision is in consideration of that event.
This item is appearing today due to a change in code regulations as it relates to accessibility for information posted using technology, not related to the recent incident. This item will occur as the code is changed. So as agencies use technology more and more to communicate, there's an effort to make sure that that communication is accessible for all, and code will be changed, and then we will update the policy as appropriate.
Okay, so it's just a coincidence that it happened at this time, so soon after our incident?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments, members of the Board? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunnyzia?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Aye. Motion carries. Reports, academic senate president.
Thank you, President Kellogg. I'll make my really brief. I want to acknowledge and congratulate all of the students that completed the programs. Month of June was all about graduation. So it was a great honor for senate to be joined by the classified senate exec in walking graduation and having a great event, as well as the nurses' graduation. They had a really good event. The opportunity for us to see their families, see their happiness, smiling, cheering, all the wonderful things that we're here for. So the month of June, I want to congratulate every single student that has completed Long Beach City College. Thank you.
Thank you. Classified senate?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to start by congratulating all the classified that retired this month, and thank them for the years of hard work and their help, and with helping all the students succeed, and I wish them a very happy retirement. We've had a very productive year at the classified senate. We've placed classified senate representatives on 16 different participatory government committees. We've hosted the gathering of the South Committees here at the campus. We have distributed seven Communication Corner newsletters to classifieds so they can be informed of what's happening on our campus, as well as the other community colleges in the state. And several of us just returned from the Classified Leadership Institute. And we're very excited that we were able to be awarded with a Model Senate Award, so I brought that to show you guys. We're very proud of that, and we're proud of what we've been able to accomplish in this year. And I also want to take a minute to just acknowledge and thank President Jeff Kellogg for all of his work and efforts and caring for our college and our community. And thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent President?
Yes, sir. I'd like to acknowledge and thank Dr. Kim McGinnis, who is leaving us. Today is her last day, and she had a board meeting here on her last day, so thank you for joining us. She's done a wonderful job serving as our interim VP of Student Service, and leaves us to take a very exciting job in Connecticut, so we congratulate and thank you. We also will be making some major announcements this summer coming soon. You're going to be very excited to hear, we're going to announce this summer and at College Day, that we were able to have a record-breaking over 20% increase in graduation this year, over 40% increase in the number of certificates, over 60% increase in the number of honors graduates, over 21% increase in FTES enrollment, signaling our enrollment recovery, at the same time driving down the budget deficit by about $6 million. So I think that's really due to everyone here in this room and everyone at the entire college really coming together. I have never seen enthusiasm and work like I've seen here, really committed to student success, so I want to thank everyone for their hard work, because it's those numbers that come out for students that really matter. And I also want to congratulate the classified, who for the first time this year walked in our graduation. So thank you for that. That was a real pleasure to see. So, thank you.
Thank you. Student trustee?
I don't really have much prepared, I just want to say really brief. I'm Donell Jones, the new student trustee. I'm humbled to have this position. First off, I would like to congratulate the Classified Senate for their award, and also say thank you to all of the staff and faculty that are retiring, that have really contributed to Long Beach City College, and have really enriched the lives and the community by their hard work. I also would like to say that I am very excited to work with all of you and to learn from all of you in the process of this next year. And I would also like to say to Mr. Kellogg, kind of saddened that I won't be able to work with you in the same capacity. I hope that maybe we would be able to talk, and you can give me a few pointers. That's all.
Board of Trustees, I will start with trustee Baxter, followed by Zia, then Malauulu.
Okay, thank you, President Kellogg. First of all, I'd like to end this meeting in dedication to a retired counselor, Margaret Brown. Margaret Brown is celebrating her 90th birthday, so she was born the same day Long Beach City College was born. And Margaret was a very dedicated counselor. She's still alive, so normally, I know I do this for somebody who's passed, but Margaret was a very dedicated counselor. She happened to be the first female African-American certificated person hired at LBCC in the 19, early 1960s. And I wish her a happy birthday and wish her well. Secondly, I want to congratulate the LBCC Foundation, who put on a fantastic dinner a couple of weeks ago. I thought all the presentations, Dr. Amali, Robert Garcia, Beverly O'Neill, and Elizabeth McCann, they were excellent and highlighted the college, and really put on an excellent presentation of what we've done. And I know that our media staff had to have made those fabulous commercials, presentations, or whatever they were, and they were very, very well done. I also want to congratulate the graduates who attended commencement, and wish them well. It's always exciting to see them come across the stage. They were so enthusiastic. And what I think is so wonderful about our students, they are so proud of what they have accomplished, and their families are so proud of what they've accomplished. And it's just a joy to sit there and watch them and be part of the ceremony. And then finally, President Kellogg, my best wishes to you. I know I'll be seeing you at the different conferences and things like that, and I wish you the very best.
Trustee Zia?
Thank you. I just, I also want to echo trustee Baxter's comments on multiple levels. First commencement, it was fantastic. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to step in for you, President Kellogg. It was an amazing opportunity. I want to thank our staff, and just awesome. It's just such a gratifying experience seeing, being a part of this monumental point in our students' lives. I too want to thank you, President Kellogg, trustee Kellogg. You've taught me a lot. You've taught me to understand Robert's rules, so thank you for that, and patience. And I really appreciate your 16-year of service. We may have not always agreed on everything, but I just want you to know that I truly respect the dedicated service that you have given to this institution, and really been tremendous. I know you don't want a big party, you don't want a big shebang, but I just wanted to say that I'm grateful for your service. I also wanted to mention, I know we're going to end the meeting in honor of Margaret Brown, but if I can ask for a moment of silence, we had one of our own, Captain David Rosa was fatally shot, and due to a response to an explosion in my district at a senior citizens home, Covenant House. And I just think it was such a tragic event and catastrophic, and it's just, it really was heartbreaking to see our firefighter captain lose his life and trying to save other people's lives. So I just wanted to respectfully ask that we observe a moment of silence in his honor and the men and women that help us, protect us in this community. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Malauulu?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of things. Can you guys hear me okay? I'm kind of having to walk around.
Yes.
Fine. Okay, thank you. First, I would like to welcome our student trustee, Donell Jones, to the diocese. So excited to work with you, and I look forward to meeting you in person, hopefully very soon. I would also like to welcome Paulo Quintero, our new ASB president. I have worked with Paulo before on a few issues, and I'm very proud of him. So congratulations to both of you, and welcome. Look forward to working with you in the upcoming year. Once again, I'd also like to formally welcome Marlene Dunn. I've already made some remarks on that, but I'm just excited about the expertise that you bring. And also, I would like to thank Kim McGinnis, and appreciate what you did for the college, and wish you luck as you move on. As far as some of the activities, this June was a very, very busy month. I, on June 1, the ASB awards were taking place at the grand, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend because my oldest daughter graduated from high school on June 2, and June 1, they had a baccalaureate mass, St. Anthony High School. But we were able to get into the grand to set up for her graduation, so I kind of snuck into the ASB awards. And I must have missed all the ceremony because they were having a party, and it looked like so much fun. And I would just like to commend Taylor Robertson and- And I would just like to commend Taylor Robertson and Ramon Knott, because, you know, these students were very spirited, and it looked like they had a great celebration to the end of a great year. On June fifth, I attended the Nurses' Pining Ceremony, again, one of my favorite events. June seventh, the celebrations continued with the scholarship, a presentation in the morning, and the Journalism Awards right after. And then on June sixteenth, of course, the ninetieth anniversary celebration, I would like to commend Liz McCann and everyone at the foundation, including the Board of Governors, and all of the sponsors. It was a terrific event. I loved the theme, the nineteen twenties attire, the decoration, the meal. It was just a fabulous event. I'm so proud. I loved the silent auction, the experiences that were raffled off, as well as the live auction. So really, Randy Gordon did a really good job. Of, of all the events this month, there were two that were my absolute favorites. On June twenty-second, this past Friday, I was invited to the graduation of the Goldman Sachs Ten Thousand Small Business Cohort, Spring Cohort Graduation, by a lady who happens to be my neighbor, she lives in my district, who I referred, Mrs. Renee Lawler, who runs a small plumbing business out of her home. And I've known her for many years, and I got to talking to her several months ago, and I referred her to this program, and I'm so proud of her. She graduated from the cohort, there were thirty in the cohort, and her business plan and what she's been able to do through this amazing program, including a potential patent for her work, is just incredible. So, you know, Renee is just one student out of hundreds who the Goldman Sachs Ten Thousand Small Businesses have benefited, so I would just like to make sure that the college continues to do that. And Renee also has hired one of our LBCC students and plans on hiring more, so let's cultivate that program and keep it going. And of course, my absolute favorite event this month was commencement on June eighth. I loved seeing classified staff participating, seeing them walk in caps and gowns. That was just amazing. I, I'm getting goosebumps remembering. It was a great commencement, the speaker, it was a really good event, and of course, our favorite. I would just like to just congratulate Dr. Romali. This is, from what I understand, and please tell me if I'm mistaken, your seventh year in a row? I'm just thinking back to your interview last year, increasing graduation rate and enrollment. So, you know, did I get that right? This is your seventh year in a row?
Thanks for reminding me of that. Those were some very cool days, thinking about possibly coming to LBCC. Yes, this is actually six years in Chicago. This will be my seventh year straight of increasing graduation rates, and I have no intention of stopping that. Eight years, here we come.
Well, I, I do remember that from your interview. I thought that was impressive, especially given all the budget cuts and giving, you know, what you walked into and personnel changes, so I'm really happy that we didn't break your, your six-year, seven-year streak. So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
I would also like to thank all of you for allowing me to participate in this meeting remotely. I'm, this trip was planned long ago. Both of my girls are playing in softball championships this week, and I was very nervous and didn't want to miss, so I really appreciate the opportunity of, of being on the phone with you, going on three hours and fifteen minutes. I was hoping we could do it FaceTime. And in closing, I would just like to close, once again, I know I did this once before, but to my colleague, trustee Jeff Kellogg, I would like to thank him profoundly for all of his help the past two years that I've served on the board, his professionalism, his, you know, he's, he's just a gentleman, he's a stand-up guy. I've learned so much from him. He's been very generous with me, sharing information, resources, even just right now, you know, texting me earlier to, to kind of pull back from the phone so the audience could hear me clearly, and just little things like that. Jeff, I really do value being a colleague with you on the board. I wish you the very best. I would like to thank you. I know I'll never forget one thing you said to me back in two thousand sixteen when I ran my campaign, is you said, you know, that's how elections go. Elections are elections, and that's how they go. So I, I just really appreciate that, and I do wish you the very best, and I would like to thank you very much, and thank you all.
Thank you. We will adjourn the meeting, as was mentioned, for Margaret Brown, but also, as was mentioned, Long Beach Fire Captain Dave Rosa. His parents actually live down the street from me, so obviously, a very tragic, to have someone murdered in the line of duty, has not happened since the nineteen seventies with our fire department. So we'll adjourn the meeting in the memory of Margaret Brown, in memory of Margaret Brown, she's still living, of Margaret Brown, but also in the memory of Long Beach Fire Captain Dave Rosa, who was tragically murdered in the line of duty this week. And with that, I would like to thank everyone here at the college for all the years, the people, for all their hard work, their friendships. I wish the Board the very best in the future, as well as the college. There's too many people to try and name, and I don't do it, because you forget people. And, and also, though, as people realize, I've sat through it in all my years of, where I've, I've had to sit through videos and accolades, and, and quite frankly, they bored me when I was sitting there, so I wasn't going to do it when I had the opportunity. And also, I just, you do your job, and you do it well, and you move on. And so my appreciation to everyone here at the college. If I did have to say someone in particular, but she's not here, that'd be Jackie Hahn, because she's been actually the executive secretary for fifteen of my sixteen years, always doing an outstanding job, so I wish everyone the very best, and my sincere thanks to the college. With that, we move on to, and I don't see anybody, please correct me, but we have no s-
Susan Trask is here.
Susan is here.
Pardon me?
Susan Trask is here.
Hold on.
AFT Bargaining President. You're retired.
No, there's, the reason why is because actually, there were some items before that. This is on the trustee's request to recommend future agenda items. I know trustee Malauulu had asked for one about in the future, about addressing some items. So that was previously raised. There's no other items for, feel free to ask any you want right now, because I don't have to schedule them, so, but, so that's, there's no other items for trustee requests for superintendent president for future agenda items. Speak now? None? Report from Barg-
Yeah, just the one, just the one for the athletic department to report on what other similar programs they participate in in the community.
So noted. Report from Bargaining Association, total of five minutes for each one. Now, if you want to speak, you don't have to. I'm sorry, you're retired.
Good evening, President Romali, President Kellogg, Board of Trustees. Been doing this for my last approach on the mic as the AFT president. Just want to say it's been a, a pleasure over the past six and a half years, as far as coming before you, as far as the different issues, items, contracts, and what have you. And I want to thank you for your support throughout the years, as far as with the classified agenda, as far as that we have. In addition, as far as like, President Kellogg, like you said, like, times change and people move on and what have you, and I also want to thank you for all your hard-working, dedicated service over the years, and, and the best of everything moving forward. And also, I want to thank the Board tonight for the, the vote of approval, as far as in, I'll change hats and move over to the Personnel Commission for a while to see what we can do on the other side of things, as far as like for, for classified. And also, just the honor and the pleasure to serve in the eighteen, eighteen, twenty years that I put in with the district, as far as the different things, and all the changes that's happened over the years. It's been a great move, and looking forward to the, to the future, as far as for the college, and as everybody says, go Vikings. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Public comment on non-agenda items, there was none listed. Correct, Madam Secretary? So with that, there's no objection. We adjourn to the July meeting, and I wish everyone the very best. Without objection, the meeting of the Board of Trustees is adjourned. Thank you very much, and good night.